Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for our city council meeting. We will go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Seadom?
Here.
Lurid?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Morsian?
Here.
Nickel?
Here.
Glad?
Thank you, and this is a city council work session. I got in trouble because I call it study session, and apparently we have a new name. It's a work session. We'll move to agenda item number two as Pocatello-Iwamazawa Sister City Foundation. And I am not seeing anybody unless Lydia joined and wants to come give us a report. She's saying no. So we're going to jump to agenda item three is the Police Union Quarterly Update. Members of the Pocatello Police Union will give an update on their union activities from last quarter.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council for having us come. We sure appreciate it. And we want to give a update. It's not all-inclusive, but some of the highlights from what's going on. My name's Zach Barchie. I'm the union president. I brought with me Ryan Smith, who's our secretary today, and so we're excited to be here. The Pocatello Police Department and our members have been involved in several community events. We've been very busy, and we've gone above and beyond in our performance of our work, and we want to make sure that we continue to work on retention and recruiting. That's what we're going to be talking about today. Some of the community events that we've been able to attend, on April 13th, we donated to assist the Ada County Sheriff's Office towards a deputy who was stabbed and shot in the line of duty. I'm glad to report that he's doing well today. He's out of the hospital. In May, we participated in Family Service Alliance Rally in the Alley for a bowling tournament. And on May 19th, we participated in Casa's Annual Guns and Hoses Event. It's one of our best cooks and dispatcher Mo cooked an amazing meal, and we were informed by the fire department that they barely beat us from the fundraising.
Funny, the fire department counted the money?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was told. And we asked for a recount, and I've not been given the results of that recount.
It's in the mail.
So we look forward to next year's cook-off very much. On June 24th, we held our first annual pig roast fundraiser. It went very well. Several of you were intense. We appreciate that, and we appreciate the community's support. After the Highland High School fire, our union reached out to teachers and donated to replace needed supplies. In May, we helped barbecue at Idaho Gives. Idaho Gives is a powerful event that supports local communities and organizations in creating awareness and does amazing things in our community. On June 17th, we barbecued at the Senior Center for Juneteenth. We had Dispatch Appreciation Week, which was April 9th to the 15th. And some of the things when we talk about Dispatch Appreciation Week, it's when we publicized it, I'll read what I sent out, but it's National Public Safety Telecommunications Week was founded to honor the telecommunications personnel dedicating their lives to public safety. We appreciate all our dispatchers who show the quality of integrity, compassion, self-control, good judgment, empathy, sensitivity, intelligence, good communication skills, and so much more. According to an article in Business Insider, "Emergency Call Taker Scored 98.5 Out of 100 in Stress Tolerance," making their profession one of the most stressful jobs in America. And we appreciated them, and we were able to show that appreciation through that week. And then we had National Police Week, which was May 14th to the 20th. And we were able to show appreciation to officers, and we had a couple of barbecues. On June 19th, we attended a Safety Fest at Texas Roadhouse where we interacted with community members and gave information about community safety. And the Pocatello Police and School District 25 Summer Program actually wraps up today. I'm missing some of our hike to be here, so it's kind of warm outside, so. But this summer youth program, we take youth in the community who would not normally have the chance to participate in summer programs, and we do service projects and fun activities in the community. We focus on leadership. You might have noticed an article in the Idaho State Journal titled "Galaxy of Fun." That's what that's about. We enjoy having positive interactions with youth in the community and discussing leadership and positive community interaction. Going above and beyond, on June 5th, Officer Handel and Corporal Amos received the Attorney General Award for Distinguished Service in Community Policing and Field Operations. They both were flown to Washington, DC to receive the award, and Attorney General Merrick Garland for the United States personally gave the award to both officers. And I wanted to read to you their brief excerpt for the notes, but it said, "In May 2022, Officer Demetrius Amos and McKenzie Handel and their trainees, new hires, on just their third day with the Pocatello Police Department, responded to a domestic disturbance in which a man was threatening a woman and gave an child with a gun. When the officers and trainees arrived, the subject turned his rifle on them. Officer Amos fired twice, and the subject fled to an alley and took cover. He lay in wait to ambush them when they followed. When they did, he fired multiple rounds, gravely injuring Officer Amos and injuring Officer Handel, who had placed himself in the line of fire to protect his trainees. Handel was able to direct additional responding officers to the subject who surrounded to guide a new hire and providing emergency medical care for Amos himself. The subject was transported to the local hospital by ambulance, and Officer Amos and Officer Handel were evacuated in patrol vehicles. Officer Handel's selflessness and quick thinking resulted in his own injury, but likely saved the lives of officers around him, including Officer Amos. Officer Amos encouraging messages to his department through this period of recovery unquestionably improves morale among colleagues who had been affected by the incident. When they initially arrived at the hospital, both Amos and Handel walked into the emergency room with support from their colleagues. And when they were released, they both insisted on walking out. And so obviously, it's still, having them here still positively affects us today, so. Retention and recruitment, we recognize the importance of continuing to evaluate training, equipment, and pay, and necessities like health insurance moving forward, and making sure that we have positive interactions, even though our CBA at this time is closed and looking at possibly doing MOUs as we're moving forward. Going forward, we look forward to schools starting back up, especially us with kids, little ones. That'll be a great day. And we look forward to many more community events that are coming up, like Shop with the Cop and Give Cops the Bird, and other things that we're going to do in the community. And with that being said, are there any questions or anything that I can answer from the mayor or the city council?
When we say "Give Cops the Bird," we're not meaning...
Yeah, so it's a fun pun, but we're able to give a lot of turkeys to the National Food Program.
Yeah, we're able to sponsor quite a bit of donations. It's beyond just with Idaho Blue Pantry and stuff. People like giving us the bird, so.
Linda?
I just want to thank you all for going above and beyond everything you do in the community, but it was an incredible thing for the two officers, Amos and Handel, but also for our city to have that kind of recognition. And just what they did to protect us and to protect their fellow officers and everything is amazing, so thank you all.
You know, I might just add a big thank you as well, but one thing Zach forgot to mention was when they were in DC and they were doing, after they had gotten the award, it was that afternoon, we were out and visiting a museum and stuff, and then we kind of went to get to our car and do what we needed to do, and we kind of split up, and our officer saved a life in DC while they were there. A child was choking on some stuff and had passed out, lost some consciousness, I think, and our officers were the first ones there and got it taken care of, got him breathing, got him back to going again. And then the museum people came in and tried to be the hero and screwed things up again, and our officers took care of everything there. So not just in Pocatello, Idaho, did they have an impact on the lives of citizens. In DC, after getting an award, same thing. So we're pretty lucky to have the officers and our first responders we have, so thank you.
Yeah, and it goes back to our training, and Lieutenant Daniels was able to do some back thrusts and do a finger sweep and get the lodge item out of the throat, and so it was great.
It was good, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Then we'll move to agenda item number four is Fire Union Quarterly Update. Members from the Pocatello Fire Union will give an update of their union activities for the last quarter.
Here comes the rest of the story.
That's right, the rest of the story.
The real winners. Sorry.
I'll get to that. Morning, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us here, or me here. I'll be brief. I know you guys have a lot of work to do today. I just wanted to touch on the Casa Chili Cook-Off real quick. I know that we won. I think it was due to a last-second donation, but we're a little bit quicker that way, even though our counting ability for counting money may struggle, but I get it, I get it. But no, really, we had a lot of fun doing that, and we were able to raise quite a bit of money. I don't know, do you remember total? I know that in my notes here, we have that we donated from our charitable fund about $1,050 from our charitable fund. That doesn't really include the personal donations that came from people that were attending the event, but I know that it was really successful, and it was a lot of fun. A lot of good ribbing between the cops and the firemen. We have a good relationship. It's been great working with them. We look forward to doing it next year. A couple other things that we've done since I was in here last time, I have kind of a running total on the amount of charitable donations that we have done since the first of the year. I know that I've talked about our pumper fund before. That's money that we take out of our charitable fund that our members put into, and we put it on the fire trucks and on the ambulances. There's about $100 on each rig, and if we're out in the community and we see somebody, then we're able to, as a crew, divvy that out to people in the community as we see the need. Currently, right now, this year, we've given about $940 out of that fund. Sometimes that goes to hotels for people that are misplaced by fire or just general needs that we see in the community. We participated in Rally in the Alley, which is a great fundraiser for Family Service Alliance. It's a lot of fun. I think we were the last ones bowling because we talk a lot, and everyone was waiting on us, so there's that. And then we gave about $250 to Operation Underground Railroad for the movie showing that they had over the fourth. Coming to a total for total contributions of just over $2,500 for the year, and we look forward to donating even more as we get closer to the holiday season and stuff like that. So another thing that I just wanted to touch on was the efforts of our personnel on the Highland High School fire. As tragic of an event as that was and devastating, our members did an excellent job in making sure that they took care of that as quickly as possible, and their efforts to put that fire out were very great. Just a couple of statistics on that, is we had 44 personnel on that fire. About 21 of them came in on their days off, and those guys that came in on their days off worked anywhere from a 10-hour day to a 15- or 16-hour day. So we had a lot of people that came in to backfill to make sure that we were providing fire protection for the city and EMS services while the other crews were fighting that fire. So we had a great effort put in by all of our members on that one, and we look forward to seeing what comes of the rebuild on that. I was a high school, or I was a Highland graduate back in 2006, and so at the same time, it's good that they're getting some new facilities, but it was a terrible situation that happened, so. And then the last thing that I'll touch on is we're doing our Muscular Dystrophy Association Fill the Boot Drive. The tentative date for that is September 23rd. So I have to, I'm going to identify some intersections that we'll be at, and I'll get that to you guys for approval, and we'll go from there.
So you haven't decided the intersections yet?
Not yet. No, I'm still working on that.
Sounds good. Questions, Council? Linda?
I just wanted to also thank you for all the work that you all do, but on the Highland High School fire, the efforts to fight the fire were tremendous, but also just going above and beyond there with saving the trophies, the photographs, all the things that you, the memories and things that are so important to people that you guys tried to save as much of as you could, that I think the community really appreciated.
And we got a lot of support from the community, too. It was great, the outreach and the outpouring of thoughts and actions. And one thing I'll say about that is a lot of the times our members do stuff like that that goes undocumented or unnoticed. So we have a lot of great individuals that are really thinking about the community and about how we can do the best to serve the community that way, so thank you.
Thank you.
Rick?
You have one member of the department that was involved in saving a couple of lives recently, and I think that deserves mentioning when we talk about what happens within our emergency services people. That was coincidental, as I understand, that he just received that training.
I'm trying to...
Swiftwater.
What's that?
The Swiftwater rescue.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He actually just attended training in Moab, Utah for that, and I believe he was the only guy that went to it from our department, and he's in the process of getting the rest of us up to speed on it, and it just so happened that he was on shift that day, and he did an excellent job with that. So that training definitely paid off in that situation, for sure. So I look forward to the rest of us being able to glean some of that from him as well.
I think we don't celebrate some of those things like we should. Saving a life means something, and it seems like you and our police do that on a regular basis, and you're sitting up here and you go, "What's that? Which one? Which one was that?" You know? "Oh, yeah, that one," you know? You know what I mean? And so I think sometimes we forget how lucky we are to have the first responders that we have, the training that we have, and the dedication, and just the things that you do for us. It's great stuff, so.
Mr. Mayor?
And I don't think we recognize sometimes when we approve training schedules and put budgets together, the applicability on the job and how those things work. I mean, that was sheer coincidence that the only person probably in the city that could have done that was on the scene and had just finished training to do that and save two lives.
And that's, my comment was along those lines, just what a testament that is also, I mean, it's great work, but it also shows the importance of training for all of our first responders. That's an incredible investment to make because it pays off for our community. So I think we need to keep on track with recognizing the importance of training.
Agreed.
And it goes back to what we just heard from Zach, too. I mean, it isn't natural instinct to step in the line of fire to save someone else's life, and yet training does that, lets you know what you can and can't do, and I, we can't overtrain our people, especially in emergency services.
You're right. You're right. Questions? Okay, perfect. Jordan, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to agenda item five is Levy Scooter, E-Scooters Presentation. Kirk Lipczinsky, representing Levy E-Scooters, will be present to give and give information to the council regarding Levy Scooters' operation in Pocatello. Mr. Lipczinsky will give an overview of the plan and answer questions from the council. Please tell me you weren't on a scooter.
We're starting out bad.
Be that cool.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for having us here. No, you just take a second. Thanks again to the fire department. I'm alumni of Highland, and I was relieved to see those trophies and pictures saved, although I was not a star athlete. A lot of my friends were, so it was nice to see all that memorabilia saved. So anyway, okay, and sorry we're late. It's taken me a little bit longer to get dressed than I had anticipated these last few days. So I am Kirk Lipczinsky. This is my son, Noah Zion. He is going to be my fleet manager if this all comes to fruition. You've all seen the Bird scooters. They're already around town. We have actually been in the works with Levy scooters since before then, trying to get together a good business plan and get a good, quality, safe scooter. We don't want to just throw anything out on the streets, so we've really done our due diligence, really taken our time, gone step by step by step through this. We picked Levy. Bird was actually our first choice. Lime was our second choice. Couldn't get anywhere with either one of them. I discovered Levy scooters and got to know the CEO and really liked their business plan, the way their scooters work, the way their software works, very, very user-friendly. So I guess what we'll do is what our basic plan, if it meets with the approval of everyone, is we're waiting right now on a price estimate to get actual docking stations so that our scooters won't be just laying around on the sidewalk and in parks and stuff. There will be designated docking stations where people can park the scooter. Once the scooter is in that docking station, they can end their ride, and then it's automatically billed to them. I already have every business that I have asked if they are interested, not one has said no, that they don't want a docking station at their place of business. I think we're up to five, and I think I just got three more yesterday, that want them at their place of business. It costs the business owner an average of five cents a day per scooter to have those scooters docked at their business and charging. So that is one thing. We see this as kind of, I know that not everybody is real thrilled about having these electric scooters around town, but if you go to any other growing, prosperous community, they're everywhere. It's something that we feel is the wave of the future. Cuts down on parking problems, cuts down on traffic, and quite frankly, they're just fun. We brought one. If any of you guys want to go ride it around the parking lot, they're a blast.
We're not going to do that today.
Oh, maybe.
Today.
Really?
There's a story behind that, and no, I'm not going to have the city council out there today riding the scooter. They can do it on their own time.
That's fair, okay. So ours, the Levy scooters also are secure. I've had probably the number one thing of feedback I've had is people kind of in a cynical way going, "What are you going to do if people are stealing these things? Throwing them in the pond at the wellness complex, throwing them in the river." We have one here. I invite anyone in the room to try to throw that scooter more than 10 feet if they would like to.
So there again, we're not going to do that.
That's how I did this. I was actually throwing a scooter across the yard. No, that's not true. They have interchangeable batteries, so our scooters don't have to be rounded up every night and put on a charger and then redistributed every morning. They have interchangeable batteries. We will have a whole bank of batteries charged at all times in our shop, so when we get a notice on our phone, on our computer, anything that a battery is getting low, we can just run right out and swap out the battery. It takes about five seconds to do that. We think this is going to really, really help local businesses, especially in the downtown area, where people can say, park at, say, UG Pacific, grab an E-scooter at, I don't know, let's say the Yellowstone, and go hit the antique shops and whatever. It'll encourage people to get down and shop downtown. We like to present ourselves as an outdoor activity type of community. We think that this will be a really big aspect or big asset for that, especially when people can get on these things and go use the greenway and see how much greenway we actually have. They can get on these scooters, ride up and down. It gets them outside, enjoying our community and the assets that we are so fortunate to have. And we feel it would just kind of give the town an image that we're growing and we're prospering and trying to move in kind of an eco-friendly way, but also allow people more maneuverability on that. If this ends up being successful and everybody likes it, we don't have a lot of problems. We are thinking down the road of maybe adding bicycles to this for people that don't feel safe riding the scooters. So like I said, we feel that this is a big asset to the community. We are, as a family and as a company, we plan to be 100% pro-Pocatello promotion. We will be marketing. We're not just going to put the scooters out there. We're going to be marketing. We're going to be advertising. We're going to be taking part in the parades, all the local events. We just ordered a big, huge banner, so we plan to be at all the events, let people try them for free, and really kind of promote not only our business, but the community as a whole. So with that, does anybody have any questions, concerns for me?
Okay, we've got some questions. We're going to start with Cory, then we're going to go to Josh, then Brent. We'll go to that point.
Okay.
You mentioned having docking stations at different businesses, and I like it, but I also fear the loss of convenience. Because like when somebody's just walking down the street and they're like, "Hey, there's a scooter. I'm going to jump on it." Can you give me some like...
We can set our scooters up that way so that they can be left, you know, wherever, but you will also have the option. We would prefer you pick them up and leave them at a docking station, not just for the convenience of our business, but as the general aesthetic of the community. We are really going to try to avoid having our scooters laying around on sidewalks, and we want it to look professional and neat and organized.
So now this, we said about five cents a day for the business owner, correct?
Yeah, per scooter.
Now, that five cents a day, are you charging them that five cents a day, or is that based on the charge for, is that based upon like the...
That's what the, I know where you're going.
Yeah.
That's what the average shows that their power bill will go up.
Okay.
So we will be using their power outlets. We will go and we'll have to look at, the docking stations we're looking at are so brand-new. I don't even have a price on them yet. They're really cool, modern-looking, from what I've seen of the initial drawings and stuff. I'm hoping we can figure out a way to permanently mount them. I know we'll have to take that up with the city, too, see if we can mount them into the sidewalk, or if they're just so heavy they can't be moved. So we do need to look into that a little bit more.
So follow-up to that. The cost for the docking station, is that on you or on the business owner?
Yeah, we will pay that, yes.
One last thing. Looking at your scooters versus the scooters that we currently are with, it looks a little sturdier, it looks wider.
Much, yeah.
Can you talk to me about some differences between the two?
So for starters, we have four of these right here, and since then, a newer model has come out. So I think one of our local business owners is going to buy the four that I have for his. So what you'll notice, as Noah brings that around, we have the pneumatic, thick rubber pneumatic tires, which make them safer and easier to ride, much larger diameter wheel, and our new ones will actually have 12-inch wheels, which make them far, far safer, easier to handle and ride. These are much more stable because Noah showed them where that battery, right, you're literally standing on top of where the battery goes. The battery is huge, and it is heavy, so they practically balance themselves. Extremely easy to ride, very, very safe. Show them the bell. If you're coming up on pedestrians, it's got a bell, it's got a speedometer, it'll show you the gauge, the range, battery level that's left on it. We can control the speed on these from our office. Like, let's say there's a Contra at the wall, or no, let's use a better one. Let's use a Revivat five. We don't want these things going 20 miles an hour, around there, so we can set it up so that, okay, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM in this area, every scooter in that geofenced area is going to be limited to, say, four miles an hour, or whatever we determine is probably optimal and safest. So, yeah, they are very easy to ride, very stable and safe. They've got headlight, taillight, reflectors, everything.
Lastly, I just comment, I like the idea of a local person with this kind of initiative and not having an outside person coming in to impact the community because you know the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Your presentation.
Thank you.
Josh?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions as well, if that's all right. First with the docking stations, I want to understand as well. So I rent the scooter at the Yellowstone at that... First with the docking stations, I want to understand as well. So I rent the scooter at the Yellowstone at that docking station. How do I know where the rest of the docking stations are? Is that on my app? Is that?
So it will, as soon as you set up your account, you'll have the app on your phone. And when you're on the scooter, you just got to pull up your phone and it will have highlighted, here's a docking station, here's a docking station. Here's where, a general area where you are allowed to leave it. And it will give you a very clear alert if you try to leave one, I don't know, somewhere where we don't want scooters, it will say, it will not let you hit and ride. I mean, you can hit it all you want, but it's still charging your card until you move that into a designated parking spot. And I know that works very well because when we got the first one and I was tinkering with it, I set the parking station too small and it charged my card for 24 hours until I figured out how to go in there and change. I mean, it is so specific. I had the thing in my garage, but it was on the wrong side of the garage. And it picked up on that and it's like, no, you can't end the ride till you get that. So I'm sure my neighbors were laughing because I bet you I was out there for 30 minutes moving this stupid scooter around the garage and getting in the exact spot where I could end the ride. So yes, so they're, they're pretty convenient that way too.
Okay, so before I start, if I know I'm going to, I'm going to start at the Yellowstone and I'm going to shop, you know, at the black and orange store, I can look ahead of time and say, okay, I know where my docking station is that I need to park and where I need to go. Okay. What was? That, that answers most of my questions on that part. What's your winter plan?
Store them.
Okay, just when first snow starts to look things coming?
When, this is something that we don't, I can't give you an honest answer because it's one of those things we're going to have to kind of play by ear.
Okay.
Depending on how clear the sidewalks are. We'll just have to, we live in Idaho, we'll just kind of have to let the weather dictate. I am working with ISU. That will be a major, major part because we want the kids at, at ISU to be able to use them as late in the season as possible.
I'm sure that Levy and every scooter company has an algorithm that says this amount of population can typically support this number of scooters. What is Pocatello's kind of expected threshold of how many scooters?
It's shocking. According to the statistics, Pocatello can handle easily 400 E scooters. And we are planning to start with 50. Depending on how things go with ISU, I would like to have up to 100 on campus, depending on how that goes. Wellness Complex, we'll see how that goes. We'd like to have them up there. We'd like to have them in the warehouse district, downtown district, ISU, Wellness Complex, and of course, the Greenway primarily.
And then the final thing, the Bird app has a safety training and probationary period where it restricts speed until people had some experience on the scooter. Does Levy app have anything like that?
Not that I've discovered yet, but if Bird has it, I'm sure that if I dig deep enough into our dashboard, we can find one.
Thank you.
Brent?
So let's say you rent the scooter at the Yellowstone, you go to the orange and black store, and you want to go a couple other places after that. So you park at the orange and black store. Is it charging you while you're in there?
No, you can pause.
You can pause.
Pause ride, so it will still keep your scooter reserved for you and locked, but your ride will be paused while it's not being, while it's not.
So during, while it's running, during transit time is when you're being charged for?
Exactly right. Only while it's moving.
Okay, so what's next then? Do you expect to work with the legal department or make a proposal or what?
Yes, yes, I have, I've been in contact for quite some time now, trying to get this up and running. Because like I've said, we're, we're a big pro Pocatello business, and so we want to do everything very methodically, do everything the right way, not cut corners. So yeah, I've been in communication with Jared and we're working on that.
Okay, thank you.
Rick?
Kirk, you mentioned sidewalks come winter. Are these intended to be used on sidewalks or streets?
That is funny because I just this morning was reading some more studies from the National Insurance Institute, whatever about that. They will be used, can be used on sidewalks, that's up to the city, but what we will do is in areas such as downtown, where they're more likely to be used on sidewalks, we will bring the speed on them way down. If you're on the Greenway, say out south, in that area, they'll go up to 24 miles an hour. So we can pick the speed. We really want to be safe on this. If we feel there being a problem in downtown, we may have to make some adjustments as we, as we move forward.
As I remember signage, we were just in Boise, they do not allow them on sidewalks. They're strictly designed to be used on streets, so they're not in competition with pedestrians.
Now, statistics show that what I was just reading is using them at a slow speed on a sidewalk is exponentially safer than on the street. And I could be, this is pure hearsay. I think that the reason Boise did that is because of a problem they had been having previously. And like I said, this is hearsay. What I've heard from people over there is that those scooter, I think they, I think they have both Lime and Bird, and they weren't restricting the speeds. So people were going down the sidewalk at 20 miles an hour on these things. And so a lot of the bigger cities now are saying, yep, can't use them on the sidewalk, ask me on the street. But like I said, with ours, we can severely limit the speed.
I guess my question is, do we want them on our sidewalks in the city of Pocatello or do we want to put them on the streets? I, I remember being in competition, leaving, leaving the convention center, walking to the hotel and nearly getting run over by a couple who was on the sidewalk and wearing helmets and they were geared up and they were fearless to the detriment of pedestrians on the sidewalk.
I, I agree completely, and, and we want to keep it as safe as possible on that. If there happens to be a big event, say a concert at the Wellness Complex, we can shut them all down in that area during the concert until the crowds clear out. So we can control all that. My fleet manager here can control all that from our office at home 24 hours a day.
No, my point though is, I don't know that we want them on sidewalks at all. I think we want them on the streets. I guess I'd have to refer to our legal legal to see whether we have that ability to, or whether we have anything in place to restrict their usage. You have tried a discussion with Bird earlier, because I think all theirs were intended to be street use.
I think so. Sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
I'm wondering if during our earlier discussions several months ago with Bird, if we have any language in place that would, would put them on the streets and not on the sidewalks.
Great question. Jared Johnson, city attorney. I, I pulled the Bird contract or memorandum of understanding that we entered with them a little while ago. I don't remember when actually. When did we do this? Yeah, earlier this year, approved by council in, in February. And that was part of that discussion as well. We can regulate sidewalk usage. We don't, the law, the Idaho code treats these as bicycles, which are allowed to be on the sidewalks with certain restrictions. The Bird contract states that they'll be used on streets and bike paths and greenways when available, which means that when those aren't available, the sidewalks are an option. So under that contract, which is a one-year introductory term with Bird, they're allowed to do that. At the end of that probationary time, if the council wants to look at it with either company or both companies, we can pass a local ordinance that restricts these. Cities that have gone that route have passed it, changed it, repealed it, put moratoriums on it. I mean, they've been the rounds with these things. And so the Bird discussion led you as a council to just go, let's do it for a year, let's see how it goes and then decide what we need to do from there. So that's where that stands, if that answers your question.
All right, one more point, Mr. Mayor. When we were in Boise at the AIC meetings recently, I noticed much less scooters and a move toward bicycles throughout the entire downtown area, even in the, the parking garage of the hotel we stayed in was a rack of bicycles that people were renting. And it, it seems to be maybe, has technology changed or is this, is this side by side with, with what you're doing? Or is there a, is there a change coming?
Yeah, we would like, if, if this is as successful as we're hoping, we would like to expand into bicycles as well. I think that where we're at right now, and this is another thing, it's just purely opinion. I think that it's more bicycle friendly in, say, a city like Boise where they have a lot more designated bicycle paths and lanes. That might work, but it's kind of a new thing, so we're kind of dipping our toe into the water. We're going to see how it goes. We absolutely would like to expand into bicycles as well. And if the bicycles are more popular and doing well, sell the scooters off and go with pure bikes or however it's going to work, you know, whatever the balance ends up being.
Okay, so I've got Linda, Josh, Corey, then Brent.
Okay. My main question was answered. I was also, I had a memory that we were saying we were not having them on sidewalks. But you answered that question, so I guess we'll just still continue to see how that goes and, and take it from there. But the other thing I was going to say is, I also really like the idea of bicycles. I mean, the scooters are great, but personally, I feel more comfortable or safer on a bicycle. And I, I think a lot of people are already very familiar and comfortable with bicycles, so I like going in that direction. But I also understand what you're saying in terms of a city's readiness, how bike friendly they are, bike ped friendly. And that's something that we as a council have really been working on to become a more bike ped friendly city. So I hope that we keep moving in that direction and then we'll come to a time where the, you know, it will be a better move for us to, or for you to add the bicycles into the mix or maybe switch to that.
As you were saying that, it just occurred to me, you know, the bikes will be quite a bit more expensive to operate where these, we haven't nailed down an exact price yet. I think we're, we're right now between 25 cents and 30 cents a minute. The bikes are obviously much more expensive. So we're going to have to charge more per minute to ride those to cover our costs on this. But yeah, these, but yes, I would love, I would absolutely love to have both.
And maybe a mix would help with, you know, people of diverse economic means as well. If a bike is too expensive for somebody, but they can afford a scooter, that they have those options. But I think that we're working on moving towards having more bike paths and trails and, and lanes and things like that. And so as we move in that direction, we'll be better able to accommodate the different modes.
And we love, we think that having these around kind of sends that signal to our populace that, hey, we're, we're moving this way. I, we really don't see much downside to it. I understand people's concern with safety and naturally, you know, that's, that's something we need, do need to be concerned about. But yeah, I do like that idea of having bikes and scooters, actually.
I have just one more that I thought of, and I believe it was Councilmember Mansfield asked earlier about the saturation, you know, how many we can handle in a city. And I do remember Bird saying 400 for Pocatello, so you're saying the same number. But having, if, if we move forward with your company and we keep their company, you know, competition is good. But where are we at with the saturation rate? I, I didn't remember what Bird was starting with, 150 or 200? 75?
75, right.
Oh, I thought it was more than that.
So I have actually developed a pretty good relationship with the fleet manager and the CEO of Bird. And we've discussed this and we are all in agreement that we don't want to have an animus, animus relationship. We all agree that there is enough market in this area that we can all flourish and do fine. Of course, competition is best for everyone. I look forward to the competition with Bird as, as I think they do. I think they kind of look forward to having us here too. Makes everyone better.
But we're nowhere near that
Not even.
saturation level. Good. Okay.
Josh, Corey, Brent?
Do, do you hear, does your app have ways of reporting accidents?
Yes. Yeah. Accidents, abuse. Let's just say, let's just use an example that I like to use. Let's, let's just say some rambunctious, younger version of Kirk gets his hands on one of these.
So you're talking about Noah? You're talking about Noah? Okay. Go ahead.
Out there seeing if you can jump them. We will get a notice on our phone going, hey, scooter number four just had a jolt or a jar. We need to look at that, see, is that an accident or is it somebody abusing it? And it will tell us if it like, I can't remember exactly how it works. Like if it tips over and hits the ground, okay, that's a, that's an accident. We need to go check on that. If it's just like a jar, it's like, okay, somebody's potentially abusing it, we can just shut the scooter off from wherever we are.
I would be, if we do approve this, I would be interested if, in including a request for an accident report, perhaps after the first year to see what that, those statistics look like.
Yeah, we'd be happy.
The second thing in common I wanted to make on the sidewalks, I guess, I remember the Bird discussion a little differently because I guess, I, in my head, I always kind of envisioned them on sidewalks. And to be frank, I think I'd prefer them on sidewalks than on Main Street. Like I think of Main Street where there's no bike lane, parking on both sides and narrow two lanes when there's parking all the way down. And I don't know if I want to be driving with scooters on the road there, trying to, with cars trying to pull in and park. And I think I'd prefer them going slowly on the sidewalk and consider them more pedestrian than traveling on the street.
And, and that's something we can experiment with and see. Like I said, just this morning, I didn't even get through the whole article. But I was just reading that study and they're, they're saying that the numbers are like exponentially higher, more accidents and more serious accidents on the street as opposed to on the sidewalk. So one thing that would make them safer, it just dawned on me, the newer model will have lights on the sides as well. So that could drastically cut down on vehicle versus scooter accidents because they will have bright lights strobing. So they'll be very easy to see. And our newer models are much brighter colored. They're white with green stripes on them, so they're a lot easier to see as well.
Corey?
Josh kind of took the wind out of my sails, but about the accidents thing and if they could be reported or recorded. But, and this might be, it's a question for Bird, obviously they're not here, but this might be a question for law enforcement, is if there has been any reports about accidents on any of the current scooters that are out currently.
I'm getting a no, negative on that one.
So, and then the other thing with what Josh was saying about the sidewalks, I remember, I kind of envisioned it on the sidewalks also for the same exact reasons. And it just seems a little bit more appropriate for, for those scooters, but that's it.
Okay, Brent?
When you mentioned adding bicycles, you mean electric bicycles?
Yes, yes. Sorry. Yeah, I guess I should, yeah. Yeah, and they're, the kind of ones that we were looking into are not going to be like your kind of bikes that people are going to want to get in on and go thrash around town. They're very upright, kind of, just pure transportation.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Is? Rick?
Will scooters be a tool for law enforcement?
Scooter Brigade?
You don't want to think about that?
Be kind of nice, put some lights on there and sirens.
The sirens, the bell?
Little miniature siren on it.
Replace the motorcycle.
We could try it. We could put a little miniature siren on there.
Doesn't sound like the chief's interested. Fair question.
That'll be a note.
All right, super. Thank you.
All right. Thank you guys so much for your time. Appreciate it.
We'll move to agenda item six is personal policy handbook updates for FY 2024. Human Resources Department staff will be in attendance to present proposed updates to the personal policy handbook that were presented during the 20, May 25, 2023 budget development meeting or are tied to FY 2024 budget items. Items will be considered by the council at the August 17, 2023 regular city council meeting, to be adopted on September 7, 2023. Any financial changes will go into effect the first payroll of FY 2024.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director. I feel like I should apologize in advance because the most boring, tedious thing I bring before you is policy, and I'm bringing it three months in a row. I can tell you that is better than listening to me talk for two hours about policy. Dean, your computer is too new. So I'm going to go through five policies that we're looking for an adoption earlier than the fiscal year start date. One of those is for transit specifically because we need to update some language in our handbook, and I'm talking like singular words. So we can cross off some audit items. And then the rest are policies we discussed May 25th, that there were tentative approvals to build the budget and around that concept. So I'm going to go through those one by going to go through those one by one, hopefully not taking very long. So the first policy, this would be our earliest adoption. We would bring it at the next council meeting. Under our workplace, drug-free workplace, we need to update the word dispersing to dispensing. And we need to modify the notification period to five days rather than two days. And that is the only change to that policy. They're not all this easy, but I promise they're not super complicated at this point.
Brent?
You, you say this is for transit.
So with the transit grant, there's specific wording we have to have in policy, and they change those words and don't tell us
Right, I understand.
until we get it efficiency.
Right, but, but this change in policy will apply to affects everyone.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council President?
So this policy still doesn't implement random drug testing?
This does not implement random drug testing for anyone who's outside of a CDL situation. So CDLs are controlled by DOT, and the risk manager and legal handles those. This is not affecting any of those policies, other than the amount of notification that we have to have is now five days instead of two.
But we still don't have a random drug testing policy?
Not for regular employees, no.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was just curious about the change from two days to five days.
It's a fed, it's coming down from the feds. I can't give you their logic.
That's what I was wondering, if that's dictated by
It is.
them, or by something we've experienced, or?
It's something that they tell Skyler that we're deficient on, and we all sit and look at it and have no idea when it changed, because no notification came out.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
The next policy was presented on May 25, Azure, where HR is looking to modernize our bereavement policy. This is a draft of what the policy would look like. We would completely discontinue the current policy that allows for 40 hours of an employee's sick leave to be used in a bereavement situation. And we would go to the hours based on the loss. And I broke that down in a chart here. It's a little easier if I actually just go to the form. So this would be time granted to an employee that is outside of their regular leave accruals. It would be on, only granted when requested, and it would come out of our regular timelines. So it wouldn't be an additional cost. It would come out of their regular pay budget lines. That's how we fund sick leave and vacation as well. This form would be required and has to be submitted by the employee, and then the time is added. We do have a caveat that supervisors can request proof. And I know you're all looking at me of how you're going to do that. Well, luckily, California and Oregon are already requiring bereavement leave for their employees, so we use the criteria established in Oregon for what sort of documentation could be submitted. I'm guessing most supervisors are only going to request this if you're seeing someone with multiple requests within a year. Any exceptions beyond the two weeks of the day-to-death would go to the mayor's office for review. Sometimes a death occurs, and, you know, the funeral could be six months later, depending on the family's needs. So in those situations, we would defer over to the mayor's office. We would like to put this in place in early August, simply because there is no increased cost to the city, and it is a benefit to employees that I feel we could give sooner rather than later.
So as it is now, do we see much request for bereavement leave?
We maybe see one request to pay period across the city. It is not a widely-used benefit. The times we see it as the biggest impact is when we see someone lose a spouse or a child. And you're now going to ask, how often does that happen? In my seven-ish, eight years, we see probably one spouse lost a year, and we've seen several children.
All right. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Next up is retirement gifts. As we talked about on my first budget meeting, we pay for a retirement gift. That is longstanding practice that there is no policy on. We would just like to adopt the policy so that we have that covered, so everyone understands that benefit. The costs for this are absorbed through the vacancy in the position coming out of their regular operating lines for personnel. There were no changes to the amount of payment. It's simply putting it into actual policy. Next up is the bilingual incentive pay program. This one is a little different. We would maintain the old policy, simply because this is defined within collective bargaining for our two unions. So we would have a new section of the bilingual pay, which applied to people not covered by collective bargaining. They would pay based on level of proficiency for their, their bilingual skills. This is built into the budget, so the only increased cost would be if new people come on and they test for the program and are eligible.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Remind me, are only certain positions eligible for this pay?
So in this situation, an employee would go to their supervisor and ask if they can test for bilingual, and it's up to the department head whether or not that is a need in their department.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And I was going to ask for a reminder, too, on languages. Is it, any languages, or do we have specific ones?
We have left it wide open to any language.
Okay.
Rick?
How, how does one test?
So their supervisor contacts HR that they're permitted, and we then arrange a telephone call, which is, it's a verbal test. It's not a written. They just have a conversation over the phone, and that's the testing mechanism. We then get a scoring sheet whether or not they passed and what level of proficiency they received.
So there's no written proficiency?
It is not a written level. It is a complete oral assessment.
I have a question on the CBAs. Can we do a MOU opposed to opening the?
An MOU is an opening of the contract. Fire is up next year, and police is two years out.
Can we open a contract and limit it? Or when you open a contract, is it wide open?
When, technically, when you open a contract, it's wide open. You can try to restrict it down. When we go in and we selectively adjust the contracts, when we're in multi-year contracts, it becomes a little bit more administratively burdensome. It also removes some of our ability to ask for changes that we're looking for as we add benefits for those unions. But that is up to the direction of council.
Okay.
Next up is introductory periods. You haven't heard this one before, so this is a new policy, new change I'm bringing you. And it's that one little sentence that's in blue, that you can't tell that's in blue. Employees within an introductory period are eligible for a step movement if steps are granted at fiscal year. This is currently not our practice. If you are in an introductory period, you do not get a step movement. You have to wait till the next fiscal year. We would like to remove that practice and put into policy that they're eligible for a step movement for several reasons. One, it's really good for employee morale that you're working in a job, that you're eligible for that raise. If we have a problem with their performance, we are managing that. And at the end, if there's a real issue, they usually leave willingly. If not, we do look at letting them go or helping them find another position. Two, it's an administrative nightmare to track, because finance has to manually make sure that all of those people are tracked and then adjusted in the budget. Now, you're going to ask, how are you going to pay for this, Heather, because the budget's tight? We're already paying for this. The salary projection file is a snapshot. Of all the vacancies we have and the changes that have occurred since we took that picture in April, there's only one department that has an employee that doesn't have the correct funding to cover this. And in talking to the department head over that division, they can absorb the cost.
I think this is a good idea. You know, we, this was a topic in commerce in HR at the legislature this last year. And the problem was you hire someone in September before the budget changes, and they're stuck at a salary range until the next budget cycle. And the person hired in October is on the new wage, so the new hire is making more than the old person was. And that's not right.
Yeah.
I think this is a big boost for morale. I think it's a lot easier on managers as they're explaining our process to applicants. I think this is a win across the board for us.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I agree.
What's, I, I think the introductory periods vary in time, don't they?
They do.
What's the longest one?
So for emergency responders and tele, emergency telecommunications officers, formerly known as dispatchers, it is one year. For general employees, it is six months. And for promotions, my office is yelling at me right now, because they know this off the top of their head. It's somewhere between three and six months. I can't remember which one it is.
Well, and then to just extend Rick's point, I mean, I could have been hired in April, and the October person.
So if you're hired April 1st, you don't get the step movement.
Yeah, that's, you know, if it was
April Fool's Day is a real moment for step movements.
If, if it was 60 days, that's one thing, but six months is, it's, it's quite a period, so.
Questions, council?
And that's it.
Okay.
So you will see these on various upcoming agendas, as few as possible, so I don't have to come to as many meetings. But this, you will see some in August, which will be the majority of the changes. IT policy will come then. I know finance is working on theirs. And then in September, I will only bring discipline before you, because we are looking at a total overhaul of that entire process at the city. But it needs its own, because your eyes are going to glaze over next time.
Okay. Thank you, Heather.
Again.
Okay, then, council, before we get into this, should we take a small break, short break? We'll go ahead and take a short break for a few minutes, which who knows what that really means. But thank you. We'll be back in a few minutes. We'll go ahead and get started again. Thank you very much for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and continue on with agenda item number seven, fiscal year 2024 budget development. Council may, may consider the fiscal year 2024 budget and discuss recommendations to prepare the budget amounts necessary to meet notice requirements for August 3, 2023 public hearing. And council, the direction we give, I just might add, the direction we give Gene today, it's got to be published tomorrow, at the, not published, it's got to be at the paper tomorrow, so it can meet the publication deadlines. And so, numbers that we tell Gene to move forward with will be in the budget. We do have the public hearing, and then the, the work session in August that we can change things, but we cannot go up after today. We can go down after today. So with that, Gene?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Gene Hill with the Finance Department, and Bonnie Schroeder as well. Let me just get rid of this presentation, this placeholder So since we last met, and please interrupt me if you've got any questions. What's happened is, the first thing is, I want to, we, we went through and we scrubbed everything. We got rid of the forgone, the 1%. It's no longer in the budget. We literally went through line by line and scrubbed this, to where you'll see that right now we have a overage of $271,000 in the general fund. And if we go down, you'll see that the government side, there's still, so tax base is 271. And then you'll see right here, the ARPA fund, line 51 across there. Again, that's just anticipated things that we're going to, you know, we set aside to, because there's a limited timeline, we can use those funds. So that's been set aside. The small amount, the 110, you'll see it's just kind of a timing issue there. Please slow me down if I'm going too fast.
Just, just a minute, Gene. Gene just mentioned that we had removed the 1%. Council, I want to make sure that you're comfortable with that 1% forgone being removed. One council member asked for that. Once we went through and scrubbed it, I recommended that we pull it out because of that. But that was, the decision that the council had made as a whole before was to have that 1% in. And so I just want to make sure that you're comfortable with that, pulling that 1% out.
I agree with pulling it out. I think not taking the forgone is a good thing.
Okay. I know where Rick stands. He was the one that said it. I just want to make sure we're consistent. We've had one remove things before, and, and so that was the concern that I have for this discussion. Josh?
So, so did you say that we have a budget overage, meaning we have more revenue than we need right now?
Yes, $271,000.
So, so where did that come from, if we remove the 1%? Because my understanding was, the 1% accounted for approximately $350,000, and we were, so if we pulled that, how did we get back to a balance of that?
So, as we were going through the budget, right, scrubbing it?
Yeah.
I had made some errors on not counting, like grants and things like that, that came into the police department, the fire department. And so when you add those back in, it covered taking out that 307, 300, I think it's 370 grand from forgone, and plus, also made enough to where we could cover capital expenses to go into Fund 78. And so, and give us a little extra.
So, so it was just unanticipated? Well, it was
Just not accounted for revenue.
It was not accounted for revenue?
Yes. And it's in the other, I'm sorry, it's in the other revenue.
We always focus on those few lines that, of revenue, but we'd forgotten to pull the other revenue in, so. Vinda?
First, I want to just clarify something on my laptop here, or tablet, whatever it is. I have a different number than that 271. Is this the old number?
Yeah, I apologize again. We were literally this morning still trying to make sure that we got our changes in, so.
So this is a little higher, so that's better?
304.
Yeah.
$304,000. So it's come down because we found some expenses. And again, we've even got a couple more that I need to explain, but.
Okay. And then the other thing I was going to say about the forgone, I, I see the value in taking it, but I also, I'm okay if we don't. So I think I can go both ways on that one.
Okay. Scott, and then Brent?
So we're 270 over, is that right?
That's correct.
Is that going to change?
Yes, because as you guys make some choices, it will change.
So if we take the forgone, we're 600 over?
Yes.
Right?
Yes. And if I can, again, this is, it's a challenging time with inflation, and I've gone through these numbers again, just updating for the Audit Committee and stuff. But what we, what's happened also is by, as we talked about before, with the amount of money that we have set aside as reserves and stuff, we are in interest on that. As rates have gone up, we've picked up about a million bucks, you know? So that, plus the 3%, gives us that opportunity to cover the shortage that earlier we were talking about, forgone, and plus have a little bit of overage.
So, but when I look at it, if you take that money and put it into wages, can't do that with reserves?
True. Personally, again, it's, it's a fine balance, right?
Right.
I mean, you've got the taxpayer base that we don't want to overtax, but we've got improvements we need to make to the city, we need to take care of our employees. And you know, I, I think we've done a good job. I think council's done a great job of working with Heather and approving the raises and stuff we've got. I mean, of course, we'd all like more, but it's that balance.
Well, I just, I, I mean, from my end, I under, I understand this, right? And I, well, I don't understand it completely. But I also understand that we, we have a retention problem. And we've had a retention problem, and we've had that problem for years with our employees. And, and some of it, a lot of it, comes down to wages. Part of it is, is 3% wasn't taken, forgone wasn't taken over the years, which gets you behind. Gets you behind.
We, we do have some catch-up to do, but I think it's going to take us a couple years. You know, you can't fix 12 years or whatever the, you know, 20 years of history.
So I, so I put it on you, I guess. And, and, and I get that. I don't have a problem with, with that. If, if you don't take the forgone, and you're saying, you know what, we can catch up. if you don't take the forgone and you're saying, you know what, we can catch up, we can catch up in two or three years. And I, I think employees look at that and go, they're willing to do that, right? They're willing, they're willing, they've been willing because a lot of good ones have, have stayed around. But if, if you pass a year like this, which we may on the forgone, and next year it comes down to, mm, sorry, we didn't look at it right. It, it just makes it tough. It's hard to swallow.
I don't disagree, but I think again, just personally, but the council's got to make the decision.
Right.
You've got to balance that between the taxpayer base and the-
I, I agree.
It's not easy.
I agree.
Okay, and then I had Brent, but he said, never mind. He waved me off. So Rick?
Well, in response to what Councilman Marchand was just talking about, I, I, I feel like maybe there's a little misunderstanding about forgone. You know, we take 3% this year. And when, when we actually get down to the bottom line and the L2 is reported and the county comes up with all of the property that we're going to be, have an assessed value on and wage taxes on, we're probably going to come up at 2, 2.5% is what the actual assessment's going to be, which means that we can declare forgone on that balance. So we took our 3%, but we'll never, the way the state system works, we'll never have an actual accounting of what that's really going to be. So to me, we're not, we're not, we're not behind. It's just a, a quirk in the way assessments and valuations work in, in every taxing jurisdiction, whether it's cities, counties, cemetery districts, libraries, fire, whatever it might be. So I don't feel like we're shirking our duty and not taking forgone. It's just, it's a, it's an accounting thing that works out because of the way the, the, the timing of the way valuations and assessments are reported. So I, I don't feel that we're, we're not doing what we should be doing. It's just, we take what we, or we, we take, that, that's a bad way to put it. We, we, we build a budget based on what we see the city's future needs for the next year are. And there ends up being more revenue available than what we really thought there was going to be. So it lowers the levy rate in the future. And I, 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 I don't feel, I don't feel a responsibility to take that forgone. I know there are projects we'd probably like to do that we, but we're sitting here in this budget with almost $7.1 million in excess reserves that we don't need, that, that have accumulated. And if there are things we need to do, I think that's where it needs to come from, not from, not from taking forgone.
So I feel like I, there's a consensus, at least a majority that has said, no, we don't need that 1%. That's where this whole discussion started, so. Okay, I just wanted to get some clarification from the council on that.
I just wanted to point out some, a few changes that we've made, just to, actually, I should go back up, just to make sure that you're aware. So again, the 100K that we took out for branding is included in this now, right? We put it back in. The 150 that Brent had needed for the open, I forget, open field-
Open space plan and something else.
We put back in, we put back in again the million that will be put in for capital improvements. That was taken out, you know, it was, it was, the way I understand it, years ago, it was always put there so that we had it to help do the improvements and the things we need. It was taken out, we put it back in. Again, please just interrupt me in the-
No.
Please.
Who have we got? Linda and then Brent, or Brent and then Linda? I don't know who was first.
Okay. I just wanted to go back to the 150 for the open space plan. Did you, where does that stand? Is it in or out?
It's in, it's included. These other things I'm going over are all included in this new presentation.
Okay.
Brent?
So that this does include a million for capital improvements?
Okay.
And then there was, last time we did this, you know, I was, I, I had, the street had like $800,000. And it was because I forgot to put in the expense side of that. The million, the million, you know, for streets that, I mean, for paving and the 350 for a street, a street sweeper, right, Tom?
Yeah.
And so that will, using the reserves, that brings it down towards zero. So I just wanted to make that clarification. And then airport, I think we need to talk a little bit about, and Alan may have to come up for this, but, so he, he's got the-
Come on up, Alan.
The, the contract back, the way I understand it, I'll turn it over to him for Delta. And so he's going to have to call it, you know, use the reserves to pay for this contract, and I'll turn it over to Alan.
Alan Evans, Airport Director. So I guess just to bring you up to speed, we did meet with the airlines yesterday and did get what they were requesting for this additional service. It looks like it's going to be a half a million dollars for a six-month period is what they'd like to start with. So we're, we're pretty much in line with where I think we thought we would be. So, so that's what that number is looking like. There isn't a contract in place yet. They're working on getting that for us, but.
That's the MRG?
That's the MRG.
Okay.
We, we're going to have the same, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
We're going to have the same monthly accounting of that MRG that we had with Sky West?
That's what we're going to ask for, yes. We anticipate that being that way.
Our meeting yesterday, we asked them if we could do all of those things and they were checking to make sure they're obviously larger than Sky West, but they should be able to get us those accountings so that we have those. They did not want to, to go over a six, six-month period for starters, because if it works the way we all hope it works and the way Delta hopes it works and from the input from all of the community members that are saying, we need another flight, we need this and that. If everybody does what they said they should do in six months, we should be able to pull that MRG back an awful lot more or we'll be having the same discussion again, but it'll, it will be a, a six-month thing opposed to a, a one-year agreement. And they've asked for $500,000 to get them going and they're hoping not to have to, to, to use that, but you know how that works.
If, does that mean in six months we could lose Delta service?
No, I don't believe so, no. They, they have not, they've talked about in six months, we will have another discussion. They'll, they'll look at things again and, and see if the 500,000 is the right number, or if maybe they need 400,000, maybe it's 600, who knows? But they're confident that we'll be able to get the numbers back up to pre-COVID numbers with the second flight and with Delta flying the dual-class planes that they're flying and stuff in and out of here. And so they're, they've got confidence in it or they wouldn't be doing it. They did, they, the way they put it was, we want to get, we do not want communities to pay for our service. We want to be able to continue to operate that service and grow it, or we wouldn't do this.
One follow-up. Does the Delta contract begin in September 5th, when the new flight begins?
So that-
Yeah, I'm not sure how.
So we told them yesterday on the phone, I, I told Delta, I said, the issue that we have, it's going to have to, we're going to have to figure out something for the, quickly, because they still have to run the agreement through their legal. And it's got to go through our legal and their legal. And I told them that we have timelines and they're too late for the 20th next week. They're probably not going to get a thing because, you know, attorneys, we, they like to argue back and forth. And so it's probably not going to happen the 3rd of August. And so the 17th of August, or whatever it is, is, is kind of our hope that the council sees this and that the very latest, it would have to be in September 5th where they see this agreement. And when this agreement comes, the Sky West agreement goes away and, and the Delta agreement comes in. But they, they know now that they literally have three meetings and probably two meetings, and it's a very tight timeline to get in front of the council.
We're not sure.
It's contingent. No, it's contingent.
It depends, right. It depends.
It's contingent. That's our new one.
It's contingent, that's right. So yeah, we're working it. And I know that soon as Alan gets it or, or legal gets it, we will be pushing. And I, I assured Delta we would put a lot of pressure on legal to get this through so that we can get it on the, the agenda so we can consider it.
I wanted to just go back to how we're going to pay for it. So I think you said something about reserves?
Yeah, they have, they have the reserves. And so what I wanted to do is at least get, get it to your attention and if possible, if it falls within the fiscal year of '24, that we could give Alan and the mayor the authority. And, and that may take other stuff, but at least it's, it's on the docket, you're aware of it.
So it's not in the budget?
It is included to be used from the reserves.
Okay, it is.
From, from Fund 6, which is airport.
Right.
And again, just so that the money's there, get the authorization through this process so we can make it smooth.
But we have put that in there.
So this is spending authority?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks for the clarification.
That's what we're looking for.
I can, I can come up with a lot of words.
Did I explain that all right, Alan? Is there anything else that-
You did. It was a good meeting yesterday and there's a lot of things that need to take place rather quickly, and they understand that, so.
That's exciting.
So yeah, it, it is exciting to-
Getting a lot of real positive input from community members that I'm talking to.
Yeah.
So we're, we're hoping they will use this, yeah.
Community members, especially like some CEOs of companies that are very, very happy to hear about these changes, so. And also not just that they're pleased to get another flight and everything, but renewing a commitment then to start flying from here.
Right.
So that's good to hear because everybody had, like you said, everybody has to do their part to make this work. So I'm hearing that people are happy that we're trying to make it happen and that then they will support that.
Well, and the communication that I've had with people has been very positive and that they are looking forward to it because flying out of Pocatello is what they'd like to do. They just haven't been able to.
Difficult.
Cory?
So I appreciate all the hard work that you've put in this effort. Give me just a brief idea for myself and people who might watch this later on. What will the flights look like? What will the itinerary kind of look like ideally, once this is all approved and goes through?
As far as scheduling, what they're going to do?
What time, what times will the, the planes be departing and arriving?
Yes, as I recall, the, the departure will be at about 8 o'clock in the morning leaving. There will be an early afternoon arrival, right around noon, I believe, leaves around 2:00. And then the last flight will come in a little earlier than it has been. And I think that's a really good thing because a lot of our people are getting into Salt Lake City rather early. And, and sitting for four hours, five hours, whatever it may be, and just wanting to rent a car to get home. So we believe that what Delta has done here, and we talked with them early on about making sure the schedule works. They feel like this is a very, very good schedule. People I've talked to feel like this is going to be very helpful in being able to use this better than they have been, maybe in the past.
Explain the airplane to-
The airplane, yes. So, so right now, we're currently getting a 50-passenger aircraft that's operating. This will be upgaged to a 70-passenger aircraft. It will have first class in it, 12 first-class seats, 20 comfort-plus seats, and then, then the rest will, will be the, the main cabin. And, and this is a very nice aircraft. It's bigger aircraft. It flies, as I understand, fairly efficiently. The numbers on it may be even a little bit better than the 50-passenger aircraft on cost. So we'll see how that, how that pencils out as a block hour, as Delta brings that to us. So it's a very positive thing, I think.
It is 100% positive for Pocatello and-
And, and I might just mention, as we talked with some travel agents that, that do a lot of booking for some companies, I did not realize this, but there are companies that actually will not fly their people unless there is first class. And so a lot of them were going to Salt Lake City to get on an aircraft so they could fly first class. That's going to open up some opportunity for a few businesses here that were under that type of operation. So we're going to get out and push it and make sure these people understand the importance of what we have for them and that they really do need to step up and, and use this. And, and if they will, I think we're, we'll be back in a very good spot fairly quickly.
Rick?
You know, I've said this before, and we talked about it at the Airport Commission meeting on Tuesday. I think the city's done all we can to keep commercial air service in the city of Pocatello. Now it's up to the community to use the service and show that that's valuable to our community to make, to make this whole thing work.
Well, something, and Alan will have to change, have to correct my numbers probably, but we're losing about 70% of people that are traveling, air travel out of Pocatello to Salt Lake.
It's about 60 from what I've seen, but it, but it may be 70 now, to be really honest with you, because, because it has been so difficult. Your number may be actually more correct at the present time.
So, so if we could just collect-
Some.
Some of them.
50% of that, it'd be-
Oh, that would be fantastic.
We would have four or five flights and more, more airlines in the world.
We would be looking at other locations as well at that point. It, it's there, so.
And, and we might just add, because we can, your experience at the airport, going through TSA, they've got to do some changes and stuff with their TSA. And so if you're flying out of Pocatello, we don't know if it's going to be faster or probably it's going to slow things down a little bit, maybe. I don't know.
Actually, what they're requiring of us is to upgrade our security. TSA will, will put us at a little higher standard, but it will not, you should not notice anything different as a passenger going through that. What it's really going to do is require us to do some background checks on everybody that has access on the airport and a few other things. We were there at one point a number of years ago, and then they downgraded us. And we've not had to pay attention to what those rules are. So we're getting brought back up to speed pretty quickly on what we need to do to meet those criteria. They're giving us some time. They're working with us and it, it shouldn't be a big problem.
That's good, really good. Linda?
You're probably doing this, but I just wanted to ask, are you working with the chamber on exactly what the mayor said and what Rick said, getting businesses to use this?
Yes.
So that everybody does their part?
We've arranged to be at, take a table at the chamber at the next meeting that's coming up. Our advertising efforts, you should see a big push. We're, we're working on that, getting something out. And, and we're going to expend some monies to really push this so that people realize what's here and what's available.
Rick? And parking is still free and we have complimentary coffee.
I like, I like how you transitioned to his radio voice, PSA. Okay, super. Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Yep. So if I can, if we can come back to the reserve and the 271, I just wanted to go through the other stuff pretty quick and just make sure that everyone's on board with this, if that's all right?
Yes.
Again, the, the only other real negative we've got out of this is the ARPA funds, which we addressed, right? Which again, it's just an anticipated how we're going to spend the money. So we'll have to, but I wanted to make sure that it was here. And, oh, come on, computer. We've got 29 over, am I in the right place? Back up here. I wanted to touch base on so all the, you know, all the debt stuff, all, all the debt services covered from savings, et cetera, all the construction covered. The only one that we're, you might have a question about is the retirement, the unplanned retirement at 400 and on line 74. That we're planning to cover out of any excess salary savings from fiscal year '23. So that will be covered already. And then that would, you know, obviously that'll bring us to a positive number here for the total government spend. Then on information systems, this 26,000, I want to make a special request because of the time system we're having is going to, kind of going to run out of support for that. So this money plus some money I want to ask for in the, when we come back to the over 3%, we're going to really need that. So that's, would be utilized. And that's basically, and, you know, we know that we're going to, based on the actuarials, two or three years, we'll have to come back on the police retirement. But other than that, that's kind of a, if you're all okay with this, kind of where we're at, I'd like to just jump into the, you know, excess reserves, whatever you guys want to do there, and the 3% over and above, if that's okay?
One, one question first.
Yes.
We look at the mayor and council budget. We didn't get into exactly what that included. Was there elected official salary increases including, included in that? Was there elected official salary increases including, included in that?
Yes.
I'd like to take those out for the six elected council members.
I disagree.
Okay?
I disagree as well.
I agree with Rick.
Okay?
I agree.
I disagree.
I, the six of us up here on this dais, I, I would doubt necessarily need the pay, but I don't think that the pay or the compensation is necessarily for the six of us necessarily. I think it sets a precedence for the office, the work that's being done, and to attract quality individuals in the future, I think that it, it speaks for itself. We speak about staff needing to be compensated and, and taken care of, and we need to support them, but I think the same thing has to happen for this, for the seat. Not for me as an individual, but for the seat and what the seat represents. And I think that we do a disservice to the seat when we minimize the compensation to the seat. Again, if I'm not elected, if I'm not appointed, then the next person who is should be compensated for that amount of work in honor and respect for the seat. And that's why I disagree.
Other, Rick, or Linda, go ahead.
Sorry. I, I agree with what Cory said, I think it's not about any one of us that are currently in these seats, it is about what the position itself is worth. And fair pay for any position, whether we're talking about out there in private industry or whether we're talking about our employees or whether we're talking about the individuals that are in these seats, I think fair pay is important. And also, just as you said, if you want to get good people willing to serve, I don't think finances should be a barrier. There are people that want to serve that just can't, it takes time away from their paying jobs and time away from their, I mean, you know, their main paying jobs, time away from their families and everything, you have to make it at least somewhat worthwhile that people can afford to serve their community if they want to. So, if we're looking to get quality candidates to serve in office, you know, I don't think the pay is gonna be anywhere close to where it really should be for the time that people put in, but it needs to be at least somewhat reasonable. And when you look at other cities where, for the amount of time that, that I know that most of us put in, we're low. So, I think it really is about the position and divorce ourselves from what our needs are, that has nothing to do with it.
Okay, I got Rick and then I've got Cory, then I've got Scott.
I have not queried every city across the state, but a, a, a quick query of some of the cities, this is one of the highest-paid councils in the state. At the current pay level, we're, we're almost identical to Idaho Falls, to within just a few dollars, we're less than Boise, and there are very few across the state that are more than what we are right now. And I don't think that compensation makes a difference whether any one of us serve on the city council, or anyone in the future will. There's something else that makes a person run for elective office and put in the time to review these agendas and be at these meetings and attend budget sessions for a solid week, if that's necessary. I don't think that's, money isn't a motivation for being here. I, and I don't think anybody on this council would not serve if the compensation were half or were twice, I don't think it would matter. And I don't think it's going to attract candidates because of what we do here, the compensation is not going to attract candidates. Sure, it's nice to pick up a little check every couple hundred bucks, every couple of weeks, but that doesn't make a difference whether I serve or not, and I don't think it makes that difference to anyone. And I think it's, it's a small token that we don't need to, it's only a couple thousand bucks, I would bet, in the, in the overall scheme of things. And I, I just don't think it's gonna make a difference, and I think we should not be taking that. If, if we're doing all the way with forgone, there's other things we can do to help cut the budget for this city and help to lower the tax levy across, and I think this is a, this is a small token of what we can do.
Okay, Cory?
I do agree that none of us or anyone is necessarily here for the compensation, but I do think that it is appropriate for the seat and for the office. But I'd like to also look in, I, I'd like to see what, what is it specifically for the mayor's salary increase? What, what is that at? Because right now, we're talking about...
Before we do, before we do anything, any of that, let's finish this and then we can talk that if the council wants to.
Because, so now are they all clumped into one or do we, are those divided?
They're, they were separate.
Separated, okay, perfect.
Mr. Mayor? They are separated. We got Scott and then Linda?
Yeah.
Scott?
I under, I understand what everybody's saying, and, and I've watched, I've watched this council and what they've done, and they, you guys all work extremely hard. I, I understand the pay thing, but if we're not gonna, I mean, Rick made my first point, if we're not gonna take the forgone, makes it a little bit tough. And we all make the same, the arguments made up here in regards to council pay that employees make on, this is what we're trying to do, we're trying to attract good people and we're trying to keep good people, and we, and we're riding that thing out. So, it's hard for me to go, yes, give me that money, and then look at them and say, no, I'm not, we're not gonna take the forgone at that point and, and try to do something more for you. So, that's kind of where I'm sitting.
Linda?
I just wanted to respond to one thing that Councilmember Cheatham, or Council President Cheatham said, is that, that money isn't a motivator for people to serve, and, and I agree with that. None of us are doing this for the money, nobody would do this for the money. So I, I agree that money doesn't, isn't the reason that people will choose to serve, but money could hold someone back from serving. So, those to me are slightly different things. You know, you're not choosing to run or to serve in office because of the, the wonderful salary that you get, because that doesn't, you know, pencil out really, but it could keep somebody who wants to serve from serving. If, if a younger person, we say we want, we want young people to get involved in, in politics and, and serve their communities, we say we want, you know, working people to serve, anything, any time that they put into the council takes them away. And I think there needs to be some fair compensation for that in order for it not to be a barrier. So, it may not be a motivation, but it could well be a barrier. So I, I still feel that it isn't about us and what our needs are, it is about the position and what it is worth.
Josh?
I, I, I think, I just want to reiterate again that we are doing a 3.5% raise for, for employees and a step increase, which is one of the most significant raises we've done in decade for the city. And so I think that we are doing a lot for, for the city employees and doing good work there. No disrespect meant to anybody on this council, but I want to see more people my age up here with me and in my family situations. And if that check could mean the difference between paying off their student loans for the hours that they don't work because they're here in budget meetings, then that's something I'm willing to vote for.
Okay, Brent?
Jean? So what would the annual increase per councilman, per year amount to?
Dollars or percentage?
Dollars.
So for the council members for 24, you're currently at 13,000, so six times 13, let's do the math here, hang on, we can do it right here.
Times what, 6%?
It's 13...
13, 148.
148.
It's going to 14, 647.
What is it going to?
14, 647.
So it's 78, 888?
It's 11.4%.
No, but what, what's the dollar amount per month?
13, 1, what is, 13, what is it now?
Currently?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is the increase?
What, what, what is currently the?
Currently, per year, they make 13,148.
148. So it's a difference of 1499 for a year.
1499.
Yeah, 1,500.
125 bucks a month.
How much?
125 a month.
So that's what we're talking about, 125 dollars a month?
Between the two pay periods, yeah.
Okay, that's what I need to, thank you.
Linda?
Just one quick comment to, also in response to Council President Cheatham, the Idaho Falls, the last I looked, and I don't know if it's a proposed increase that hasn't been finalized, that they're looking at in their budget, but I was looking at their council members at somewhere 16 something, so it is, we're not neck and neck with them.
They called, they called me to find out what we're being paid and we compared and it was identical.
Really? That was not what was on the chart that I got.
We'd seen, okay, so the, let's move on from this discussion. Has anybody changed their decision, their thought process? No, no, no. So we had three that said, get rid of it, three that said, keep it, and I will just weigh in on this. I, I think that our council does not get a break. They work 24/7. If you go to the grocery store, you get grabbed by people, your time is not your time, and I think that 14,000 is a shame, and if we're one of the highest-paid city councils in the, in the state, I think everybody needs to start looking at it and start saying, wait a minute, this is ridiculous, because I don't know one of you that doesn't get stopped somewhere on your day off, you don't get a vacation, you don't get that free time, and so I, I think that the, the pay for city council should be doubled, quite frankly, and so I'm in favor of the, of the pay increase, so I would say keep it in.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
So just...
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Your question?
No.
Okay. So the total for the government-wide total, just so you can see, total revenue is 135, 136 million on line 106 right here. Total expenditures, 167 million, and so we'll burn through 31 million of reserves or savings for projects and things like that, and that gives us to where, you know, the, the budget's pretty well balanced, to zero.
Okay, I, well, I can't just leave a meeting and say we're gonna burn through 31 million of reserves, that is not...
I'm sorry.
The case. What we're doing is we have saved and what, move that back to where it was. If you look at that, that is our utilities, we have a five-year plan, and that five-year plan is pushing that, those, and, and that's, that's where that is. We're not, we're, we're doing what we planned, we're executing a plan that the city's had for...
Apologize.
For a long time, so.
Yes.
For the community, I just want to make sure they understand, we have been planning on this, it's not a surprise...
Yes.
That we're spending this money for, to improve our assets, so.
Yeah, I apologize for...
Yeah, I could see that phone call coming, so.
But don't we have to get that final number to a zero?
Yes. We will.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it was very close and there's still a few moving parts, and so that will absolutely be at zero. I, I just wanted to make sure that these planned events, where the savings have been set aside, that you could see that the total budget is very close to zero right now.
The, what we've got to get to a zero is that 200 and whatever thousand that, that he's got. Cory, you had something?
Well, while we were on the topic of that, in the 11% increase for mayor and council, I wanted to know what was that in regard to the mayor's position?
The increase or the percentage or the...
Both. So the increase, what was the increased dollar, overall dollar, and then what was the percent-wise? I guess it's 11% since we... 11%.
You're leaving him?
So currently, the mayor's at 86,000. 124, it'll go to 95.8, which is about an 11% increase.
With that, I would entertain moving that to about 110,000. No less than 100.
This is, I'm, I'm out of this one, so.
Quick question. Do we have some other personnel things on here that we've cut that we haven't added, right, back in?
Yes, I, I'm gonna address that, sorry.
Okay, you are going to address it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So to get that 271, we'll be talking about the things that we had not added to this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, Linda?
And I don't know exactly what number I, I want to go with yet, but I do want to say, similarly to the discussion that we had about the council, I think the position of mayor also isn't about the person that is in that seat right now. It is about what is that job worth and how much work does that take, how much time does that take? And I think that that position is grossly underpaid for the amount of time and work that goes into it. And again, when you look at other cities, the, the mayor of Idaho Falls currently, I don't know what proposals are for their next budget, if there's any increase proposed, but already is substantially higher than the mayor of Pocatello. And I've seen firsthand the amount of time and work that, that this mayor puts in, and I would also say that that position is a lot of time and work and deserves to be paid and, and compensated at a higher amount. So, we can talk about the specific number, but I'm definitely in favor of a larger increase than we have discussed so far.
Rick?
I don't understand how you can look across at the department heads in this room right now, who are gonna get a 3.5% increase and consider them any less important in what they do than what the mayor is. And I think if we're gonna have a 3.5% increase, we need a 3.5% increase, period.
Okay, Cory and then Josh?
I agree with what Linda just said about the compensation for the seat, not for the, not for the person. If we want qualified people to serve as the mayor of the city, then we have to pay them a comparable wage to what the job entails. And I don't know of any CEO of any major corporation with this large of a budget who's making less than 100,000. That's, I, I feel like it's really inappropriate to ask someone to do that job and to not compensate them for the work that they do. And we, we talk about department heads, there are some department heads who actually earn more than what the mayor's salary is. I understand the 3% or the 11% or whatever it is, but when you look at the overall dollar, we do have some who are making more than what the mayor makes, and I, I feel like that's kind of inappropriate also.
Josh?
To Rick's point about the, the 3.5%, I think the 11% number that was created was based on raises for employees over the past year since the mayor last received a raise, so it's, it's meant to match the raise percentage of employees. So it's, it's meant to match the raise percentage of employees, including in the three point five percent. I think that's a, for me, I think that's a, a good way to go about the process of creating that number. I worry when we start just, and no offense to you, Councilmember Ringham, but I, I don't wanna fire at the hip for a number that sounds good. If, if we had a way to, you know, methodically determine a, a different salary proposal, that maybe one I'd be considering. But at this point, I think the best process of matching it to the employee raise percentage is the most appropriate way to do so. And so I would be in favor of just leaving it where it's at.
Scott?
This is tough, because what we're, I mean, truly what's going on now is a negotiation of sorts, right? And I, I know that we have two unions that negotiate and have negotiated, along with employees, that, that also bring the numbers compared to, I work here, and this is what this guy makes, and things are comparable, and we haven't been able to take care of them at this point. So I go back to, in the next couple of years, if we're gonna make that happen, it should happen for you. It should. I know what you do. I've watched it for fifteen years now, and I appreciate everything you're doing. Are you underpaid? Yes, you are, absolutely. Well, underpaid, but I, I think our employees, when you compare, are also underpaid. And I think we need to take those steps over time.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all right, thank you. I think it's good discussions. I don't think that we move anything around. I'm happy with, I appreciate what the council has done, and I'll argue for the council, but I'm not gonna argue for me, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's move on, yeah.
But before we move on from council and mayor, I had a conversation with Council President Cheatham in the wake of the firefighter who, that the Swiftwater training saved a man. But, and before we move to a lot of other asks, because I know there are gonna be a lot of them, I would like to see an additional five hundred dollars in the mayor and council budget for plaques and the creation of a council commemoration award that the council could then give for acts of service to the city that people have done. Rick and I both thought, we wish that there was a way, that we had a formal way to recognize and thank people who go above and beyond in the service of the city. And I think five hundred dollars for a plaque that then the council can make decisions on who to award those plaques to throughout the course of a year would be an appropriate way to give back and say thank you to some of the amazing work from our police department, fire department, and others that we, you know, oftentimes are unspoken, whether that be utility workers going in the middle of the night in emergency situations. So I, before we get to the long list, and while we're on mayor and council, I'd like to ask for five hundred dollars for that.
I would, I would certainly agree with that.
I would too.
I have a whole bunch of heads nodding up here, and I'm gonna be, I, I hope that, I'm not gonna say it, never mind. Rick, go ahead.
Well, when Josh and I had this conversation, you know, it was, it was after that Swiftwater rescue. And I look back over the past year, things like the two officers that were shot, you know. I, I think we all appreciate what they did and the service that, that our staff gives. And I, I'd like to see this done, and I'd like to see it done in a council meeting, so that we take ten minutes and recognize people publicly for that kind of service that they give. I mean, that's really stepping above and beyond the call of duty when you're off duty and you rescue a guy in the Portnoy River that's running at thousand-year levels, and two guys are about to drown, or two officers are shot, you know, trying to, to get involved in a domestic disturbance situation. Wow. We, we saw that commemorated in the newspaper. And I think this city needs to, needs to formally recognize that kind of service at a council meeting and do something special for those people. We do a lot for people when they retire and we're telling them to go, go away, but we don't do anything for the people who are still with us and doing something. I, I think we can do better for our people.
Did you have something?
Yeah, in addition to that, we have a whole lot of employees that are sort of unsung heroes that throughout the years should probably be acknowledged as well.
How many have ever woke up and not had water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our water department's been ten below zero, five guys in a hole. Nobody writes about that in the newspaper.
That's right.
So I, and I, I hope, and I think that the first responders know how much I, I appreciate them and stuff, but we also have, and so if we're gonna build a, a plaque, I want to make sure everybody understands that we're, we're talking, our legal department does a great job, and.
Jim Englesey with the comprehensive plan.
We've got a comprehensive plan, we've got an airport that planes leave on time and stuff. We've got, we've got a water department employees that do stuff. I, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that we have, we have, what, seven hundred employees? And, and every one of them does a lot of really, really, really good things. We had a, a, a street department guy that said, hey, why don't we try these lights that saved the city thousands of dollars? Didn't have to do that. Nobody wrote about them in the newspaper. And so I, I think it's a, I think this is a good thing, but I, we're talking about first responders. Well, our first responders work in IT. Our first responders work in HR, they work in the streets, they work in water, they work in planning. Our first responders are in finance. And so let's not forget who our real first responders are. They're everybody. And, and I think that's an important piece for everybody to remember.
Yeah.
What, what that is. So.
Yeah, and, and I, I wanted to clarify, I, I think that's exactly what it should be. It should be to recognize above and beyond service to the city. And there are acts of heroism that are included in that, and that's what inspired the conversation, but it's not limited to that. And, and there are snowplow drivers, and, and, you know, maybe in the winter, when we have a crazy freak storm again in April, then you do five, or six, or seven small plaques for every one of those snowplow drivers, right? There, I think there are some, we have to look at how exactly this award is done, but there are a lot of people in this city who go above and beyond, and, and there are times that they need to be here to be recognized for it.
I'm gonna kinda do a straw poll if I see my department heads out there, because a lot of your employees don't want recognition, they just wanna do their thing. How many are gonna show up to a council meeting? You're gonna have people show up to be recognized and awarded a plaque?
I'll talk about my people, if you don't get to come up for them.
Go ahead and just yell it from over there, it's Tom Kirkman. Go ahead.
I gotta tell you, the, the guys I work with every day, and the guys and gals, they do amazing stuff every day, over and above. I just don't wanna cherry pick certain things, just to be honest. I think we can give a plaque every day to a lot of people. And so for me, it gets tough deciding what's plaque-worthy, because, you know, we had a sanitation guy in the last windstorm down in the canal, dragging garbage cans out of the canal, you know? And that stuff just happens every day, and I, I think that's what they get paid for, you know? They're, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And sorry, that's probably a little bit.
Chief Shai, you raised your hand.
Yeah, I, I think that if there's some criteria that the council sets, much like our awards committee sets, that that would be just a small token of appreciation that the council could, could do and formally recognizes. I know Council, Council President Cheatham has made several comments when we've had award ceremonies of, why can't we do this at a council meeting? So that would be something that would be reserved for council to do that, but it would have criteria. And I agree with Tom that there's people across the city that do amazing things every, every day, whether it's a, a broken water line in, in the middle of the night, or, you know, the traffic engineering goes down and all the lights go down, and someone's coming in on Christmas Eve to get that taken care of. I think those are, from what I'm listening to, to Councilman Mansfield's intent, I, that's what I, that's what I'm hearing. And, and so I, I would say that it would be, five hundred dollars is, is, it would be enough to cover those, those plaques. And it would be a small token of appreciation that could be addressed by the, by the mayor and council in, in those settings. I think that at a minimum, that, that's something that we could do that would move us forward. We evaluate it in the year, and if it's not something that's beneficial, then we could either continue to do it or not continue to do it. But I think it's worthwhile to set criteria and move forward with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I was just thinking, well, about what both of you said, but Tom's conundrum of, you know, we have so many good employees that do so many good things all the time. How do you decide? And the difficulty of deciding what is plaque-worthy? And then all the other things that you're not, or the other employees that you're not recognizing because you're choosing one. And I was just wondering if maybe one way to think about this would be having, not doing plaques, well, let me set that aside for a minute, but just having like an employee of the month recognition at a council meeting each month. And then maybe at the end of the year, you pick one of those, and that's the plaque person. Or maybe you don't do plaques at all. But I like the idea very much of recognizing our employees and the, and the ways that they go above and beyond. And, and the, the council, many departments, like police, for example, have their award ceremonies and have things within the department, but that we recognize publicly what our employees do. I like that very much. But maybe we do something each month so that we can recognize more people and more, you know, times that employees have gone above and beyond. So it, it comes down to what Chief Shai was saying about, we have to decide on the policy and the parameters of, of whatever this is going to be. But that might be one way to be able to recognize more people more frequently.
Okay. I like the idea of an employee of the month type of program with some type of criteria behind it.
Okay, add five hundred dollars to the.
Mayor.
Mayor and council.
Okay. The next part I'd like to talk about, we had a executive staff meeting and put together a criteria of how we thought this money could be spent. And I think the first one, this is why, because I just had a heart attack last time, that having these AEDs in all the police cars, all the trucks, is well worth the fifteen thousand dollars. So that's number one. Number two is the time clock. Right now, we, we will stop getting support because it's, it's a local, it's not in the cloud. We need to move to the cloud to continue to get support. And so I, I think obviously we, we have to be able to track the time. So that would be number two on my list and here. And then this, number three, obviously, is a very, I'm very passionate about, and I'm very biased about. But it's really a management assistant. And I just wanna give you one example of, it happened a couple of days ago. Since Joyce's time, there were some documents that have not been filled out, nobody knew about it. So for four years, we've been in technical default on certain things. And so this admin can help, or management assistant can start calling and trying to dig into these things, find out where we're not done. The other side is too, by taking off some of the burden, the cafer costs us about forty-five grand, forty thousand, forty-five grand a year to have Deaton write that. And so by taking off a lot of the administrative duties, things like that, that's something that will allow Bonnie and I to get into it, so we can actually get that done faster, get caught up. And so after that, I've got one more request that came up kind of last minute, but if you look at line number sixty and sixty-one, this was brought up last time, but clearly we have to feed the animals at the zoo, and they, they need veterinary services. So I would like to make sure that those are included. And then the final thing is, is my error, I missed some things because Ann was out of town, Ann Butler, about, on the zoo, there's, excuse me, some chemicals that need to be, we took about thirty-one thousand away from that. I need to replace that back into it to get that up to an appropriate thing. And then also, she's getting a lot of merchant fees at the rec center, which we need to cover. And so those, those are the things that I would like to see in it, and I'll, that kinda gets us to that two seventy-one, I'll stop there.
So, yeah. Brent, you have a question. What does that list total?
Actually, I should be right. It's gonna grab more of them. Seven twenty-eight, that's, that's not right. Just a sec, it's grabbing some other cells there.
So council, while he's doing that, we sat down, I sat down with the senior staff, talked about some of these things that, that were needed. Senior staff kind of organized these in what they felt was a priority as well with the AEDs, time clock. That, that move to the cloud came up, I think it was, where's Chris at? The day before, the meeting that we had, it was completely a surprise, but we're gonna have to move that one way or another. And so that's where that came from. Halliwell Park improvements.
Yeah.
Were one that was, is needed, that came up after the other list that we, that we've had, that they need to, that, that needs to happen.
It's dangerous.
Somebody's gonna get hurt pretty bad there. If not, council, then the, the VIBA, City Hall Maintenance, repaving parking lots and stuff, those things all, I think they have been discussed, with the exception of the animal food and veterinary and stuff, and that, that came up late as well. So that's why you hadn't seen a couple of those things up there. I got Scott has a question, and who else did I have? Rick?
So.
Brent?
Number one, what's the inter-fund versus tax?
IT, it's just a category for sorting.
Okay.
But it's, it's how Chris is funded. IT is funded, you know, by his fees that he charges to other departments.
Okay, so, and I guess my last question here is, some of the stuff on here would, could be one-time money out of reserves or not? I mean, Halliwell Park improvement.
Halliwell Park would be a one-time.
Could be one-time money, right? Repaving could be one-time money?
We have that, do you have that other list as well, Gene, that we had talked about, that we had, had taken off?
Capex for the.
Yeah, the, yeah, I think it's the capex.
I can see.
Did you get, yeah, some of that can be one-time money.
Well, then I guess what I would say, as I look at that, I would say, I mean, for me, when I look at it, the, the top three, I think need, I, I think those are three things we need to do. The AEDs, the time clock, the admin, just ultimately to make this more easy next year. The other things, I think we need to look at, see what money's left and go from there, and what we can do with one-time money as far as maintenance. Most of this stuff is maintenance stuff that we, we've talked about all year.
Okay, Rick, and then Brent.
Specifically, what is the Halliwell Park improvement? That's a, I mean, that's a.
So, oh, yeah.
Kind of a big vague number to me.
Are we gonna pave it?
You were hiding behind, you were hiding behind Jared there, I couldn't see you.
We're gonna pave it.
Ann Butler, Park Recreation Director.
Ann Butler, Park Recreation Director.
Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director.
So a couple of weeks ago, we went out to look at Hallowell because we had been receiving a lot of complaints. There are some safety issues we do need to take care of, one of them being each dugout. We need to do some modifications in the roof system, because if you've been at Hallowell, the fans are up above the dugout, and there's some ceiling issues there we need to take care of. And then we need to address some hand railing. If you guys go up the stairs in the grandstands, there's no railing at all. We're gonna need to cut the bleachers and make that step wider so that we can put a handrail up the middle. Of course, there's a list of other things that we could do out there, but those are the biggest safety concerns. And right now, we're estimating just the safety issues at about 100K. That's not the bleachers out down the third baseline, the wooden ones that are old, that's just repairing the concrete and railing.
So Ann Butler isn't good at really explaining what's going on, she sugarcoats everything.
Would you like me to?
Walk into the dugouts, and the dugouts literally are falling in. They're caving in, they're dangerous to be into right now. And so, so that's a need, we've got, we've got to do something there because literally they're caving in. Thanks for sugarcoating it, but let's just be honest with everybody here. The stairs, as you go up Hallowell Park are literally this wide right now, and, yeah, you can't see it. And there's a, there's a step, and then there's a platform, and then there's another poured step there. That poured step, or I would say 60% of them are crumbling right now, and there's a number of them that have rebar sticking out of them, that it's, it's really, it's dangerous. We, we go to a lot of baseball games over there, and there isn't a night, I've been there this year, that I haven't seen somebody fall down because the step is not a real step. And it's, it's a problem, there's no, there's no room for a handrail right now.
And the bleachers are the same way out down the field, so, and that's not included in that number.
So that's something that, yeah, you can do it out of reserves or one-time money or Fund 78, but that's something that's
Mr. Mayor?
Gonna need to be done.
Is this a contracted project, or is this an internal project?
Sorry.
It would be a project that we would subcontract if you would, like the concrete work, we would probably do some of the railing in-house. We have done a few concrete blocks, but I don't think we can do all of them, just as a patchwork as what we've done in the past. So it'd be a split.
Does the whole thing need to come down and be replaced?
That's what I was gonna bring up. I think in a year or so, we're gonna have to revisit to the, so when you're sitting on the bleachers, they're made out of concrete, and under your legs is that rolled edge, and those are starting to fail, and there's rebar starting to be exposed. And so those carry the full length of the bleacher, and so those small intermediate steps that the mayor was speaking about, we can fix those, but at some point, you still could catch your foot on that upper piece. So I think your long-term approach is, we probably need to take those concrete steps or those bleachers out and put like an extruded aluminum set of bleachers in or something to that effect. But I think this would help us in the short term with some pretty, pretty dangerous situations over there.
Brent, oh, Rick.
Could it happen this year?
We, we think we can get it done in the fall, once baseball season's over. So what's going on?
But we might as well wait till spring then. I mean, if there's not gonna be, if it's not gonna be played on after we finish the project this fall, is this, I guess what I'm asking is, could this be one of those things we consider from budget amendments in October, November, December, whatever happens, and get it out of the budget right now and move on?
I think that you could, you can't do it right now because there's too much activity right now there. October, I mean, you've got a couple of months, and now we're in a new fiscal year. In the, in the fall, it might make some sense to do it in the fall. The spring, you have spring ball that starts up, I don't know what time and when it starts, and it starts getting busy again.
High school baseball starts practicing late February, so they want to get out on the fields as soon as they can.
We can block off these bleachers, we could, yeah, there'd be the dugouts, but
I think the big thing too on the dugouts is there's exposed rebar that's gonna have to stay in the dugouts, and I think the sooner we get that taken care of, because it's, it's rusting. And so I think the sooner, that's why we're gonna push for fall, to try and not have another winter exposure on that rebar in the dugouts.
Okay, Brent, and then Cory.
My question is sort of beyond Hallowell, so if you can come back to me if you'd like.
Okay, we'll come back to Cory.
Can you give me an approximate cost on a, on a overhaul, all-out overhaul?
A lot of concrete out there. There's a lot, that whole thing is concrete.
So moving forward, and that's something Ann is really good at, is forecasting these repairs, all of the flat work, we call it, the concrete work, is all heaving and broken. So I think remedying the dugout situation and getting the bleacher improvements, next we move to the concrete flat work, and you're probably looking at another 50,000 for that. For the bleachers, you're probably three-quarter of a million?
You've still got
That's a super hard number.
You've still got restrooms to look at, a roof that leaks, all the doors need replaced in some of those, the locker rooms and all of that. I mean, it would be pretty massive.
At some point, we'd probably want to get the parking lot paved, there's, it's pretty rough out there, so.
Okay, Scott?
So really, it comes back to maintenance, right? So when we look at this thing, by trying to fix it, I don't know, I don't know what the Grays do, or Legion does, or are they renting this from us? Is it, are they paying us money to use it, or is this?
So we do have a use agreement with the Grays, but, and they don't pay for that, but they also, in return, they take care of their field maintenance, they clean the bathrooms. Legion does have a use agreement with us. I have spoken with them, I actually spoke to him again yesterday, just to see what money they might have to chip in. He's hoping that they do have some, but it's not gonna be the kind of money that it's gonna
Right. And I mean, they put it in the field, right? Because they don't, they're not sitting upstairs, so their money goes in the field, I get that. But thinking about Hallowell and the way it sits, so if we took the concrete bleachers out, right, left the flat there and put metal bleachers up, is that kind of what you're talking about?
I think we would, we would leave the, we would take it down to the roof of the bathroom and then put an aluminum bleacher on top.
Which we could probably do without a ton of cost. I guess part of it is, is I look at it and go, we want, we want to put $100,000 in it and then come in and tear $100,000 out in two years to redo the whole thing? Or are we just gonna do it? And again, you know, it's
I think from our perspective, we'd rather just do the whole thing and get it done, but we understand that there's monies there.
Who knows what that costs?
It's easy to say it's not much, but you're three-quarters of a million dollars anyway in bleachers alone.
Right.
And you're probably another three or 400,000 in removal of concrete and disposal of that. And then you've got the bleachers on the sides you've got to deal with, there's another three-quarters of a million, so you can jack this up to four or five million dollars in about three seconds.
Well, and you can't do that, because you've got a whole bunch of other stuff in this town that's, we've had the same, we got the, we got a golf course problem, we got senior center, I mean, we've got lots of things that we have to look at.
I think that though, and I'll get to you in a second, Cory, but with something like this, though, the $100,000 is probably, the wrong way to look at it is they put it off for two years because we don't want to tear, put 100,000 in and then tear it out. Because if it were any privately-owned business, our fire marshal would probably walk out and then say, no, you can't use this anymore, it's condemned. And so we, I think we have to spend the 100,000 so that we can at least get to a couple of years
I don't have a problem with that.
In the future, you know what I mean?
Right. And I guess the other part of it is, is I look at Legion, and I look at the Grays, that we have use. I'm not saying we have to charge them, and I get it. If they're, if they're putting their money in the field and making that field perfect, nice, it's great. But I also think that we take Legion and we use them, and we use the Grays to go out and fundraise and maybe put some money now, right, out of the, baseball's a big thing out of the community, and put it in, into outside that field, right? Selling, they do it all over the country, they sell bricks with your name on it, and those things where they make enough money that they can now do some things where, try to help ourselves, right? Versus just using it. We just use it because we have a use agreement. Well, we need some help, and this is a help. Sell your raffle tickets to do this versus whatever.
I spoke with the school district as well, because their high school baseball teams use it as well. And they were excited, she said, I can't promise to commit any money until I know where Highland's headed, but she said they are interested in helping however they can. I know that this has come up over the years.
Yeah.
I just want to plug Ann real quick, because she is sugarcoating things, but I'm super impressed with her creativity for finding funding options and wanting to right the ship on this deferred maintenance that's been going. So I, I think she's tracking right with you on that, so.
Okay, Cory, and then Brent.
I think this is something that we have to do, and I think that the $100,000 is a great use of funds, and a needed use of funds. I'd also like to see a complete overhaul of this park, but I'd, I'd like for you to create phase, a phase plan, so like phase one, phase two, and this right here should be phase one, obviously. And then we go in from there, and that way we know exactly what we're looking at, and we know exactly how to take the appropriate measures going forward. And that should help also to formulate a maintenance plan as we move forward.
Absolutely.
Brent?
Yeah, just a comment, if we have items there that are unsafe, we just need to bite the bullet and fix it sooner rather than later.
Agreed.
Agreed. And if I could, just to touch on what Councilman Marchand said, the repairs that we're doing on the dugout would not be anything that we would tear out. So that structure above the dugouts, if we tore out the bleachers, would still remain there, so.
Okay.
So we're clear, this 100,000, it's gonna help with the dugouts and some of the groundwork, correct?
Some of the bleacher work.
The bleacher work, okay.
Railing and stairs.
So the railing and the dugouts, okay.
Linda?
Back to Councilmember Marchand's, one of your original points is using some of excess reserves for some of these. So I'm just curious, I completely agree with everything that's been said, that this 100,000 absolutely must be spent. This is a safety issue. The question I have is where we're gonna take that from.
So council, my recommendation with, with that is, we've got Fund 78, and we've got some, the spending authority in Fund 78 right now. I would look at Fund 78 to fund that right now, because we do have some spending authority. I think we've got $100,000 before October that we could spend if we need to, and then this budget also accounts for, if we were able to put that million dollars into it, I think that gives us the ability to do some of these things out of Fund 78 moving forward into next year.
Okay.
And if I may, it would probably be more helpful to put it in '24, I don't think we'll get it done before the fiscal year, so.
I would, I would agree with that, so. I think that the spending authority's there, I think it's a matter of adding it into the budget and
But we take it out of the tax column.
Yeah, it's gotta come out of the tax column. Well, well, Fund 78 is, is, that was taxes, and so you, what built Fund 78 was taxes. But, but it's not something that we would be asking for the taxes
It's not new.
Added new tax, I guess is, that's what you're trying to say, okay.
And that's
It took me a second, just let those cogs turn a little bit. Yes, Brent?
When we're done with Hallowell, are we?
Let's, let's move on, I think we're gonna go ahead, I think the consensus is to keep that in, but not a new task, tax ask. So Brent?
So Gene, see, make sure I understand this. So we've got 630,000 perhaps now minus 100,000 in asked, and up here we have 271,000 potential overage. Could you just adjust that spreadsheet? Looks like we're about, show us how short we are.
So, just so I'm clear, you'd like to, you'd like me to add a few things to?
No, I'd like, just subtract the 271,000 that we have from the 630, right?
Got you, got you, sorry about that.
So that's the number that we would be short of being able to fund all of those particular items, is that correct?
Yes, just using the current task.
Yeah, right.
You can go to the reserves, just
Right, right, just, just with the tax.
So council, let's talk about, let's talk about this. Are the AEDs in?
Yes.
Do you want to keep those in?
Yes.
Yes.
So mark that as being used, so that's gonna take that number down. Time clock moved to the cloud?
Yes.
In?
We have to.
Yes, in. Okay, I thought those two, I thought everybody agreed on those two, I just want to make sure that we're not looking at that going, okay, we've got this much money, if those two, everybody agrees, we need to pay with this $271,000 that we have. Okay.
I would put the admin assistant in also at this point.
I think we need it.
Yeah?
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, um, yeah, I'm okay with it, but where I was headed with that, is so we're 359,000 short of funding everything, is that right?
Correct.
And we have some items there that we could pay from other sources or for, from reserves, is that right?
Correct.
So could you tell us, and it looks to me like there's at least $300,000 in items that could be pulled, capital items that could be pulled from reserves, is that right?
Yes.
We could at least talk about later and pull it off of this list, the Hallowell Park, City Hall Maintenance, the parking lots.
The, yeah. So most of, everything except for maybe the VIBA.
Just where I was headed with that is, it looks like we're pretty close to being able to, to fund this, if we were to use the reserves, is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, those repave the fire department's parking lots could be a reserve.
And City Hall?
City Hall could be a reserve, or Fund 78, whichever one you
I think on the animal, the zoo things, the animal food and veterinary, aren't those kind of ongoing
Yes.
Needs, so I wouldn't put those as reserves, because I think we need to fund them on, as an ongoing
Gene, before you go too far, can we change that from blue to something else?
Yeah, you can't see it very well.
Lighter blue.
Yeah.
Green!
Green, lighter, maybe an orange or something? How's that?
Excellent.
Sorry, I was just trying to make sure we could distinguish.
So, so council, this list is a list that we talked about that does not include all of the other list that you had talked about before. Do you want to look at that list and see if there's anything on there that you would like to?
Mr. Mayor? This list was created through a collaboration of department heads.
It was, but it did not include all of the list, the unfunded list that we had before.
I guess, I guess the question I'm asking is, did they identify these as their priorities?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. With a caveat that the council would still make the decisions.
Sure, sure.
I would like to look at that other list, but before we do, can we just see the, the things we've identified as possible, you know, use of reserves or Fund 78? If we take those out, where are we sitting? What does that do to the 359? We're almost where we need to be. We also said City Hall Maintenance could be, did we say?
City Hall Maintenance could City Hall Maintenance could, could, well, that's going to be an ongoing thing, so I'd probably leave it in there.
Okay. So we're left with 94?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chief or Scott?
As I, as I look at this, if we take the AEDs, we take the time clock, we take the admin assistant. If we're, if, if we say those are three things, that's 135,000, right? So that's half of the beginning of the 271. Is that, if I mess that up, that's, with those three things, that takes half of the 271. And then, I mean, if we just knock it down to, if you have, had to go down and say, we want the animal food, the veterinarian, the chemical to get us to the 271. What's, what's left there that we could take out of reserves to get rid of this list?
Well, I think most everything, I think most everything else there is, is ongoing. If you look, merchant fees, that's a new one. We're going to have to pay that regardless.
Right. We have to keep feeding animals.
Apparently, Ann, you had lost that money somewhere or it wasn't included and we need.
Was there 10 days ago and it's not there now?
So, so that, we've got to have that, that 70,000 dollars. If I'm looking at that, I've got, those two have got to go into this. I don't think you have a choice. And then if it's me and I'm going to have a zoo, I think that animal food and veterinarian things probably raised, you can't see a thing on that one. There you go. Probably raised to a, a pretty important level. So. I, I, I think some of those things you have to look at. You're going to end up paying regardless if you plan on it or not.
I would, I would still recommend that we remove the, the VIBA five-year payout. That was for the initial five years. We've included years 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, but not the five year. And I think that's an opportunity that I still think we could cut the 70,000.
Well, none of this is in the budget yet.
Well, right, on this list here though, on this list, I think, I think we exclude that one still. That's, that's my personal suggestion.
I would agree with that.
If we do that, we're almost there then.
24,000.
I know it's not included, but I don't know if black's the solution there, Gene.
That means it's a plus, right? You're, are we still 94,000?
No, that's 24 short.
We're 24 short now.
Yeah, as it sits.
And I want to keep that VIBA as a possibility. I'm, I'm not, and I might get outvoted on this, but I'm not ready to just say yes to taking that out. I mean, off this list. I know it's not in the budget, but I want to still keep that as a possibility. If there's something else we can look at, if we look at, I don't know.
Brent.
So this includes your admin assistant, right? You don't have a color, but in getting to the 24, that was included.
Yeah, it was in there.
It was included.
That would include the admin.
Okay, I think that's important that you have that help, so.
Should we make that one yellow?
Yes, I think so. I would.
I would.
See if I can find the right yellow here. Yeah, sum up the, put some yellow in there.
Quick question.
What is the sum, yes?
The, the AEDs, is that not a one-time purchase? No, those are about an eight-year, eight to 10-year life ones. So it's kind of a one-year purchase.
I would leave them where they are.
Okay, all right.
Leave me after last council meeting. I want to make sure they're around everywhere.
What about the time clock moved to the cloud?
That's, oh, that's a.
Is that one time?
Well, it would probably be a one time, but.
Let me, let me answer that a little bit, like the, Chris Hornson, CIO. When we take time clock to the cloud, one of the reasons why we didn't do it initially was it's almost twice as much as the premise system for, for the annual maintenance on it. So the 40,000 actually covers the, the implementation, taking it to the cloud, plus the first year of maintenance on it, which is about 30,000. Now, this quote's two years old that I'm working off of. Well, literally, when we were in the meeting the other day, I was getting an email from the company telling me about the premise maintenance no longer being offered. So while there is a one-time fee, there will be a increase in the annual maintenance on that, which will probably be about an additional 20, 25,000 a year over what we're currently paying. So this, the 40,000 is a one year for the first year, but we will have a continuing maintenance, the increase of about 25,000 a year. So it's, it's not technically one-year money.
It'll be an ongoing.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. What was the number that we were looking at? We're at 245 now?
Well, 245 is all of the yellow.
Okay.
And that, if we back out the VIBA, that, that means we're, again, just 24 short.
Want to look at, does, Council, you want to look at that list that you didn't address last time? That you didn't, Brent, go ahead.
What do you mean, we're 24 short?
So if we took the VIBA out.
And we've identified 245.
I'm sorry, so at the 90 at the bottom, right? 94, if you wanted to fund everything?
Oh, okay.
Let's do 271.
If you take out the 70, we're at 24.
70 is 24,000.
So the, the City Hall Maintenance, do we already have a budget for City Hall Maintenance? Is this above and beyond that?
Yes.
Do you know how much that amount is?
I can find out.
I want to say that number's close to 80,000.
I felt it coming.
So if you cut it in half.
That's what I was heading at, if we just cut it in half.
It was 80 something, I remember.
Takes over 100,000.
Yeah, and then if we had emergency items from the amount of reserves or somewhere else.
78, because you still have 78.
Perfect timing.
How much is in the, Richard, how much is in the building maintenance fund?
I believe it's around 88,000 dollars a year is our maintenance budget.
So if rather than us increasing that by 50,000, we increased it by 25,000, you good with that?
We'll take whatever we can get. I know, like, Chief Shire's frustrated right now because for the last three or four years, the AC units over on the PD side keep going down. And they went down again about three days ago and the only parts right now are in Arizona and they're on order. So it's, you know, it gets uncomfortable for them, especially with their, their gear on and all that.
Keep you in the car, though.
Luckily, it keeps, you know, staying nice and cool on, on the City Hall side. But, you know, sooner or later, we're going to have to address our, our heating and cooling system. We, we have bandages on them and, so.
Scott?
So would that be reserve money? I mean, to fix that, to get that, it'd be a one-time.
You've got, you've got, um, fun, yeah. You've got Fund 78, you've got the excess reserve.
Cut that in half and then looked at it and said, we're going to use some reserve money to fix what we have to fix in these buildings. I mean, that's, that's, I guess, for me, that's part of that reserve money when I look at the excess, I, fixing.
Rick?
But I think we need to get a bid.
Right.
Let's get a contractor in here and let's bid these air conditioning heating units and let's not play with $10,000 rounded numbers. Let's find out.
We talked to a mechanical engineer two years ago. He came out and, and looked at the site and he wouldn't even give us a number because he's, the way they get paid is off a percentage of the job. And he just knew that it was going to be at a cost that right now the city probably wouldn't be doing it. So he didn't even, he wasn't even willing to give the time to give us a rest estimate. But it's going to be extremely, we're probably in the millions because you got to drop the ceiling tile down. It's going to be new ductwork, new rooftop units.
But let's get a bid. Let's call some contractors. Let's don't call an engineer.
But you can't, you can't call a contractor. You have to have a design done first.
I bet a contractor could come.
But he can't, he doesn't know how to bid it without meeting the design criteria to meet the intent of the code.
Units. What's that going to cost?
But it's, it's just more than replacing the units. It, it has to be brought up to current code standards. It has to meet the requirements. It has to be designed by a design professional and then get it and then get the bids. And, and that's what they do, but it's, I mean, it's, it's a lot of money.
But I think we're making it too complicated. I think we could simplify it by just calling some.
But we, as a city, have to meet the same requirements that we make the general public hold to. We just can't say, oh, we're the city, we're going to turn the blind eye. And I know you're not saying that, but we, we have to, we have to set the standard. We, we are the city and we have to, we have to follow those criterias.
So, so can we get, I mean, can we get a number?
I can reach out to a design firm again and see what it would be that.
Truly, it comes down to that, right? Here, here it is. We have some reserves. We're looking at this. Doesn't mean we're going to do it.
No, I understand.
We, we want the, we want the number.
I'll be more than.
Because I agree, we have, we have no idea. We're, we're guessing, right? It'd be interesting to see what they say and then you look at it and say, yeah, you have to do this, this and this for code. Yes.
Corey?
I'd like to see a list of items that are in need of repair. We know the AC units are for sure on that list. But there's countless other things that you've pointed out. But I'd also, like I had said to Parks, I'd like to see phases. What phases can we get done quarter by quarter, year by year, whatever? So that way we know exactly what is in need and how we can efficiently approach each one of those things.
I'd be more than happy to do that. I think the biggest issue though is for Council is, is you look at, at our city, our enterprise fund buildings are great because it's built into the works, their work study and they have those maintenance. It's, it's the general fund buildings because our budgets are so tight that they get pushed to the back burner. And that's why we're, we're seeing dislapped, dislappedated buildings and dugouts and stuff like that. So I appreciate the council's willingness to look at this and I'll move forward and get numbers to, to you guys.
It's got to come out of taxes when you do that, so. Okay, sounds good. So Council, are we there?
We're there, aren't we?
Looks like it.
Comfortable where we are?
Yep.
Okay, then.
But to balance, that has to, the five, the VIBA, that's not included?
The VIBA is out, is that correct? It's not included.
So in this, in the center right here, Brent, this 270, that just includes all the yellows. So that would be what would be approved.
Right.
So that would give us $1,000 short. If you take the 500 for the award for the mayor's, that gives us the, that, you know, for the, so we can make that 1,000 and then we're there.
What do you want to do, Council? That?
I'm good.
I'm going to do it.
Okay.
Okay, do you, do you want to consider anything on reserves, excess reserves?
Right now, no, I don't think so. We'll have a discussion about that and figure out what we want to do there.
So I'll take this as the direction. We'll get it done and go to print with it.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, there really should be a motion that council's approving this proposed budget.
Okay. At this meeting? For publication? Okay, Council, I would entertain a motion to approve this for publication.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would make a motion that the council approve the budget as just presented to us for publication as necessary to set our budget.
Second.
So we have a motion by Chetan and a second by Lurik. Connie, would you please call the row?
Yes.
Lurik?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marchand?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here and with that, we are adjourned.
Hey, you stayed here for.